Go ahead and call the February 13, 2025 Agenda Session to Order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. Also, before we get started, I want to wish our fellow Commissioner, Commissioner Patel, a very happy birthday. And because y'all did it to me, y'all gonna say in happy birthday as well. So, I'm not starting it, so I'm gonna look at our Deputy Clerk to start off happy birthday. You don't have to get up, just help us start. You're the only one that can carry a tune.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
And still remains the youngest member of our commission. Thank you. We'll go ahead and move to the invocation. I'll ask the Vice Chairwoman to bring us the invocation, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We thank you for staying, to give us the opportunity to serve for our community. We ask that everything be done in decency and order. We ask that we make wise choices and decisions for everyone in our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pray the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go ahead and move to Item 1, Approval of the Agenda. County Manager Greer, any changes?
Yes, there's one additional item we need to add to the agenda, Item 3E, Revaluation Results to be presented by Joe Utley, Tax Administrator.
Any other changes for the agenda? Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
motions were properly seconded. I'd ask for your approval of the agenda with the addition of Item 3E. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. We'll go ahead and move to Item 2, Presentations, USI Health Insurance Plan Update. I'll call on County Manager Greer.
Yes, Ed Boardman and Kevin Quinn with USI will present this item. This is a follow-up from our January, January presentation, and make some, they will make some recommendations regarding our health insurance plan. And I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. I am Kevin Quinn. I am, I'm good. I am the USI Employee Benefits Practice Leader, one of them for the East Coast, and I have with me Ed Boardman today, who's the Senior Vice President out of our Charlotte office. We've been working with the county closely since 2017, and Ed will look at some forecasted costs, where we are so far this year, and some other important items to discuss. And we will be back four weeks from now with some, some, some additional, more detailed items as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
All right. Well, I know it's been four weeks, so we wanted to, as Kevin mentioned, give you an update on the financials. We have the renewal projection, which is initial. We expect probably one more month of claims that we'll use in the renewal to calculate the cost shares for, for '25, '26 plan year. So with that, I'll get right into it.
Before we get going, could we rearrange that so it's larger on the screen?
Yeah.
Even if we've got to move the people that are zoomed in off to the side or virtually in, I guess it's the zoomest. There you go. Thank you, sir.
I just appreciate that. Okay. So, just again, a brief update on the numbers. As you remember, last time we gave you a high-level summary, and as you look at the financials, things again are kind of running as projected. You know, we're looking at just over 98% of budget, you know, compared to what we estimated for the year. So, you know, with claims through December, we're at 98%. You know, the pharmacy costs, again, we talked about this last time, so, you know, there's no real change there. And then one thing I wanted to point out that we hadn't talked to, the rebates, and these are pharmacy rebates that are paid by the, the drug manufacturers to the PVM. The rebates for the full year are just over $3 million, and that number, when you look at our totals, is not included. So, just keeping that in mind. That is actually, you know, money back certainly to reduce the pharmacy costs, and knowing you've had some increase in utilization, you know, the, when we talked about the gross pharmacy costs, you know, that does have another effect to it, which is obviously your rebates have increased as well. From a clinical perspective, you know, large claims, no real change there. We still see some of the current underlying conditions, which, you know, we're helping or trying to address with some of the programs we have in place today, and also some of the recommendations we have for, for the coming plan years. And I know we're gonna talk a little bit, you know, GLP-1's our hot topic, and we talked a little bit about VITA Health last meeting, and had some follow-up information just to kind of answer questions that were outstanding, to give you an idea of what that program's about as a follow-up item. And then again, we are gonna talk a little bit more about the, the health incentives, and that actually, that program potentially a recommendation to change that going forward to address some of those chronic conditions, which again are, you know, high cholesterol, high blood pressure, and obviously diabetes are the, are the big drivers. So from a claims perspective, again, the snapshot, and I won't spend a lot of time here, but you can see the total, so through the 7 July '24 through the end of December, just under $12.5 million, so about a 16.6% increase. But again, a lot of that is due to a 4% jump in your population, so you had some growth as far as new people covered under the plan. And then so overall, just year over year, when you look at the cost on a per-employee basis, just at 12.1%, which is again, when you look at trend and, and other things associated, that is actually, you know, I think last year you were just probably a little bit higher than that. So, little better improvement, but again, 12.1, well, this is what we see based on trend, you know, a, an average as, is like most employers. The large claims are slightly ahead, but, you know, really the total dollars are, are almost the same, so you can see that there's 14 large claimants, and these would be anybody with over $100,000. And so we look at that constantly to try to help manage those conditions, because those are really, you know, when you look at your costs, can be the, the big, a big portion of those, those claim costs. Again, the historical view, again, I won't spend a lot of time, but you can see just the, we do a kind of snapshot year over year, just to see how it ran last year during the same time period. So the renewal, so this is again, the first, you know, pass at it with claims through December, and what we do for projections, we use 24 months of claims, and we project it out over a 12-month period. So, when, starting for July 1st through June 30th of next year, and then we can project those rates, you know, based on the claims costs, and then also the, the current enrollment in the, in the plan. So, as you look to the middle column, you'll see the current year, and really, the, there's a, you know, at least up top, there's no change. You have Blue Cross Blue Shield as the administrator, they also hold the stop-loss. Stop-loss level is the insurance, so the, again, if you're not familiar, that's the level that the county pays up to, and then the $200,000. Once a claimant hits $200,000, then the, the insurance kicks in. So, so that's the, the stop-loss coverage. The laser, the yellow claim, that's just to identify, there is two large claims that are identified by Blue Cross as being expected to be very high claimants next year, and so when they laser them, they raise the stop-loss level. And so that level they raised is, puts additional liability on the plan. It's not uncommon, you know, that happens with a lot of the carriers, they typically, instead of giving you a, a much larger increase on the premium, they laser that individual. So if those claims come to fruition, the county would be, there would be more liability up, above that $200,000. It's, it's just a different way of paying for it, really. Let's see, okay, so fixed costs, fixed costs went up slightly, there's a small increase from Blue Cross at 2%, and then you can see the, the claim liability. So when you look at the overall increase, the claim PPI, which is the per-employee per year, went up 12.7%. So combining that with the fixed costs, you're looking at just about a 12% increase. And again, one other thing to mention, that includes a lot of trend. So we expect, you know, next month we come back, it'll be slightly lower, depending on how the claims run or finish out in January. But, you know, we're thinking it'll, you know, most likely because of the, there wasn't, January was not a, I don't think it was a real high month, but I, I think when you look at the claims versus the trend, we're gonna probably still be around the 12% mark for, for the renewal without, that's without any plan changes. From a retiree perspective, you may be familiar with the retiree plan, which this is the post-65 plan, so this is for all the retirees over age 65. And the supplement is projected to increase at 5%. Again, it's early, that's, that's a fully insured product, so this is really just a preliminary number, but Amlin's, based on the track record and the information they had, are looking at about 12, 5% increase overall on that plan. And that plan renews actually on 1-126, so that is just an early projection. We still have more time to, to discuss that. Wanted to give you a quick update on the renewal status of each of the products, so as you look through the, the different coverages the county offers, so the Blue Cross plans in renewing on 7-1, the pharmacy, and we'll talk in a minute, pharmacy actually contract renews next year, so it's another 1, 7-126. But as a marketing, what we did, we went out to the market to see if we can improve that contract, and I think we have some, some good numbers to show you. And again, that would be looking at another three-year contract for the pharmacy, and then, you know, getting that in line with the, with the medical, which would be renewing 7-125 if you decided on the new contract, and then would, you know, the next renewal would be 7-128. Delta Dental in a rate, rate guarantee, we're happy to say on the iMed Vision, that came in at a rate pass for four years, so that is employee-paid, but, you know, the good news is there's no additional cost to the employees. And then Lincoln's in a rate guarantee, the benefit admin. And last piece, the open enrollment support, that's really something that, you know, we negotiated through, through CHUB, which is the voluntary benefits, and they actually pay that $20,000 to help offset support, really for, really meeting education, they go through the benefit plans, just really help, you know, explain the, the package as being offered to each of employees. All right. So, one thing we wanted to start off on, and I know we were gonna present the results on the clinic, and we do have those early on, and Brian and Robin and I and a few others have met with the team, and what we did is we went through a, as, as you all might be aware, so Proactive MD, the contract's up for renewal, and, you know, we're looking at another three-year contract, either with Proactive or with another, another vendor, and six vendors in total bid, so we have Proactive plus five additional proposals. One of the things that clearly came up, there was a differentiation in the bids from anywhere from as high as 1.4 million to as low as 600,000, so it was a pretty big swing. And what we noticed was the, the staffing was, was, was a big difference. So, as some of you may be aware, that the current staffing at the clinic is, is stretched, to say the least. I think, you know, right now, the model is they offer for acute care, so people that have a, you know, a headache or a fever, you know, they want to walk in, there's, there's treatment for that. And there's also a primary care model, so people, if they want to get a physical or a routine exam, can also use the clinic. And that was a change from the previous model three years ago, so as a result, the staffing that Proactive had in place is, is, is more than stretched. So they are, they are proposing five additional, not additional, but five total people to staff the clinic model, and that would be two LPNs and two RNs, and then one office manager. And that is what they feel like would be, based on your volume, in order to, to make sure people get appointments on a timely basis, you know, making sure that they have access, they felt that would be adequate to, based on the volumes that have been, you know, seeing the clinic over the last, last 12 months. We're asking each of the vendors to actually, you know, look at that, but one of the questions that came up is, you know, direction or recommendation from the board as far as, do we want to stay with a, a combination model, which would be acute care and primary care, or do we want to go to acute care, which I think the staffing, based on the lower numbers, would, that would be adequate for the acute care? But if we want to keep the, the current model, that would be an increase from a cost perspective. So, current costs, and Brian, I don't know if you have current numbers, I think it was about $650 to $700, I believe?
So the current contract for this year, this is the third year of the current contract, it's $784,000, and that includes the, the monthly service fee and reimbursables.
So that would be, you know, you're looking at an increase to almost the, the Proactive renewal for that, for the, the current model, and the staffing that I mentioned would be about 1.3 million. So I think one of the, our, our practice that does the, the search for these types of clinics, they do all the recommendations and kind of the footwork. They asked if we can talk about that, and then again, we don't need to decide today, but probably fairly soon, and Brian, I'll, I can work with you on that, but I think, you know, just getting direction on, do we want to proceed with the current model, and potentially the additional cost, or do we want to, to go to more of an acute care model, which would be, again, still provides a valuable benefit, but you just don't have the primary care aspect to it. And, you know, one of the things that we wanted to note is that there are, there's a shortage of primary care docs, it's hard to get appointments, so I think having that available is a great benefit. I mean, you're offering a, a very rich benefit, and there's a lot of people that don't have, you know, individual private practice doctors, they use the clinic as a, as their primary care. So, so that's the, kind of the question that we'll, that we'll leave for you. So, I wanted to just pause there for a second. Any questions on that?
Vice Chairwoman.
I had a question to reference to when you were discussing in regards to the five total people as far as staffing. You said two licensed, two LPNs and two RNs and one office manager, correct?
Yep.
I guess I was curious about that, because if there isn't gonna be any PAs or any doctors, how are they gonna be able to, are they just gonna filter that through when it comes to writing prescriptions? So my understanding is that LPNs and RNs can't write prescriptions then, anyway?
And Ryan, am I wrong, because I thought the, looking at the staffing number you may have in front of you, that the, they provided, she was an RN, but is she, is she a PA?
So they currently have a 140-hour provider, 140-hour LPN, and 140-hour MA.
Okay.
And I'm not sure about what they're proposing.
But I, I do know that, maybe I'm wrong on the two RNs, it might be one RN, and the other one might be a PA, I just need, I'll, I'll confirm that, but she, she is able to write prescriptions to that, yes.
Okay, then she must be, that's what I was wondering, because I know that she would have to be.
Good, good point.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick questions, if I may. First one is, did, and this kind of goes to the Vice Chair's point, did any of the RFPs that we had, did it include an MD being involved in the clinic at all?
The, and I'd have to, to look, I don't believe that there was an MD. I think what, what they are able to do with the PA is do everything, and then also make the referrals, so if someone needs to see a doctor for whatever the condition might be, or referred for other care, they have the ability to, to do that.
Okay, and I was just asking.
That's typical for, a lot of the models don't have an MD, because that would just, that would increase the cost because of the, the salary component.
Sure. I, I just know that, hearing some feedback, there's been a concern about some of the wait times.
Yes.
So if somebody did have a condition, and they're already waiting to get into the clinic, and then they go see the clinic, and then they got to see an MD, you're just prolonging that time in which they can see that doctor. And so I know from experience, and having an MD as your primary can help expedite your , your level of care.
Yep.
But the second question I had, I saw that you notated that our, our hospital partner did not provide a proposal, and my question is, did we solicit a proposal from them, and was it communicated to them?
Yes, yeah. We, we had a number of folks, myself included, that made phone, outreach, phone calls, emails, and we, they, they started the process and didn't complete the RFP, so, and we didn't get a response back on why, so they didn't complete a full RFP, so we couldn't submit them for, for part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. To piggyback off Commissioner Tyson's first question, so even if we have a mid-level provider, wouldn't we need an MD or a DO to eventually look over those patient records at verified care?
And from a proactive perspective, I know they have access to MDs. With proactive, they're just not on-site, so they do have that oversight as a part of their, their overall practice, but they're not, they're not on-site at the actual clinic, and anything that would require, you know, referring as far as to see the patient, that obviously would be to an outside, you know, private practice physician.
Thank you. Vice Chairwoman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The five proposals that were turned in, one of those was not our partners. Can you tell us who they were? Were they nearby, such as First Health, just not saying they were, that it was First Health, but can you give us those names?
Yeah, and actually, I'm sorry, so the, and I didn't go through all the bullets, but the, the proposals from CareATC, Crossover Health, Marathon Health, and One-to-One Health, and Quad Med were the, the five, you know, partners that submitted. I do know that there's been a lot of mergers and acquisitions in this space, so, you know, there's a number of vendors that have changed, so I, I could, I, as a, as a follow-up, we'll give you a write-up on the actual, you know, experience and qualifications of each, depending on, I think the biggest thing from an RFP perspective is until we, we decide if we, if we do want to go with the, the dual approach, which is the acute care and the primary care, then we would make sure each of the vendors are soliciting, are submitting proposals that are, are supporting that, you know, that type of a model, because, you know, right now, proactive has a much higher number as far as their expense, but they're also providing more resources, and, and we want to make sure it's an apples-for-apples comparison. So once we, we kind of get that, make a decision, if that's a, if, for a big reason, that direction, then we would, we would have that well in advance of our next meeting. direction, then we would, we would have that well in advance of our next meeting. And we can actually, Brian, we can, we can get that information back to you, so you can submit it prior to the next meeting, so people have a lot more time to review it.
Thank you.
Other questions, commissioners?
Just a quick, couple of quick questions for me. The PBM rebates that you mentioned, how are those, how are those treated?
So those are, how that's treated is you have a statement of account from Blue Cross, so they have a weekly, an account that they, you fund for claims, and they pay the claims out. They're both medical and pharmacy. And then in addition, when they do have these payments, they're quarterly, they're made quarterly, and they're typically in arrears, so that they're, you know, the next payment would be from over three months, you know, previously. And they actually pay that into that account. So it's a credit to that account. So they would credit it based on, if you had a claim account, you know, due of, you know, X amount of dollars, the rebates would be deducted from that amount.
Anthony, a follow-up to that, as part of this process, did we audit those to ensure that the rebate amount matches what we should be seeing?
Yes.
I know we had a short conversation about that last time you were here.
Yes, yeah. We use a, we have a company that we partner with, and they're actually, and when we get into the pharmacy marketing results called Triviris, and they're a technology company, because as you can imagine, the, you know, with the number of claims that are paid in pharmacy alone, it's just, you know, impossible to be able to do that manually. So they have set up a monitoring system, so based on your pricing, your rebate guarantees, your discounts, all the contract items that were promised in the bid by Prime and Blue Cross are actually adhered to, and they actually provide that report to us on a quarterly basis. So we look at that to make sure that you're getting the, you know, what you should be based on the agreed-upon contract.
So what I'm hearing, just to restate, it's audited quarterly, and we're provided that information?
Yep.
Okay. County manager, do you need direction from us for this, as far as acute and primary?
Not right now.
Okay. Any other questions, commissioners? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate the update. We look forward to the next update in March.
Okay.
County manager, anything else on this item?
No.
We'll go ahead and move to item B. The community health needs assessment results. County manager, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
I'm going to turn this over to Heather Skins, Assistant County Manager.
Good afternoon.
I couldn't let this moment go by without recognizing Dr. Green. We will do a formal presentation, but I couldn't let her come up here without at least recognizing that we just got back from DC, where Dr. Green was recognized at the 2025 AMA, the American Medical Association Conference, for outstanding government service, for career public service at the local level. This is a national award. And so I wanted to introduce her as our national award.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Heather, I appreciate it. It was an honor to be recognized. There were many others that were there that evening, and it was just an honor to represent the county and North Carolina, and so thank you. So I'm here today before you to share the results of our community health needs assessment. And we conduct this community health needs assessment in collaboration with our hospital system. This is a requirement for the health department, for our public health accreditation, and the hospital for their IRS requirements. So we approach this assessment in that vein to make sure all of those appropriate requirements are met. I have, this slide's a bit wordy, but let me just give you the highlights here about process. We collect different types of data to do the health assessment, both primary data that we will do survey and focus groups, and I'll talk about that in a minute, and then we also do secondary data. So we pull data from lots of different sources that already exist, and then share that back with stakeholders so they can set priorities. This assessment is the first part in an ongoing cycle. So we're going to get to about step four today, because we set priorities based on the community health assessment, and then we take those priorities and then use that to inform our strategic plan specifically for the health department. I know you all looked at this for your strategic planning retreat. And then the hospital uses that, we use that for our quality improvement projects at the health department. And then we do, you're going to hear me use the phrase, a CHIP, which we call a community health improvement plan. So for all the priority areas, we work to make these community health improvement plans. So we'll jump right into the results. So the first part is just the demographics of North Carolina and our county. We look at this, we know that we're a tier-one county, and so we take everything in context. So we have, from census data, about 337,000 people here, about 20% of our population are veterans, which makes us unique. We are relatively young county, as you know, so about median age of 31. I'm giving this context here because we'll talk about the folks that took the survey in just a minute. And then we also, when we look at our population, and I know you all know this, but for folks that are listening, we also take into account the other demographics that might impact our health outcomes. We've seen a large increase of homes that somebody speaks a language other than English at home, and so that impacts the way we deliver services. And then we have about 20% of our population that identifies as having a disability. The majority of our population is, identifies as white, but we also have a large number of racial and ethnic minorities, which also impact our health outcomes. So our seasoned commissioners might be familiar with our county health rankings, but some of our new commissioners might not have seen this slide before. Typically, our, the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation comes out with our county health rankings every March or April, so we'll be back before you to share the results of the new county health rankings. But we get these each year, and they're in two factors, our health outcomes and then our health factors. And this just gives us an idea in comparison to every county in the United States, how we fall in terms of our overall health outcomes. And so here we are in the black circle, Cumberland County, in terms of our overall health outcomes, and I'll talk about what that is. We fall just below, we fall behind national and state averages for our health outcomes. That's not a surprise to us, but it gives us a benchmark about where we need to go. We want to be in this dark, we want to be in the dark green color, we're in a light green color, so we've made progress in this area. The second one that we look at from our county health rankings are our health factors. And these similarly are on a color gradient, with this darker blue color being more positive health factors, and the least healthy is in purple. So we fall somewhere in this light purple, so we fall behind our national and state averages. And again, we've made improvements in this area, but it gives us a space of where we need to go to improve. So again, for our community health assessment, we look at our health measures, our individual health data. We also do focus groups, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. And then we set priorities. So we take all these different data points from lots of different sources, and we compile that, and we reach out to our stakeholders to understand those priorities and then, or understand those needs, and then set priorities. So let me put that to you in a different way. We look at, you just saw on the slide, health outcomes and health factors. We call our health factors our leading indicators. Those are the things that are happening right now. What is our rate of obesity? What is our rate of smoking? What is our rate of prenatal care, our teen birth rate? And then we look at our health outcomes. What are the things that, five years from now, we want to improve? So sometimes when we look at those health rankings, we say, why aren't we making improvements? Well, those lagging indicators, those things that come behind, take a while to improve, it doesn't improve in just a year. So for example, for our health outcomes, we're looking at big things like quality like, are people living longer? And if so, what is their mental health look like, and what are their physical health looks, what does that look like? So those are our two big chunks or buckets of health outcomes that we look at. So 10 years from now, are people living longer? And then we, these are, these other factors are our health factors. These are the things that are happening right now. Do people have access to healthcare? Do people have access to healthy foods? Do people have access to substance use treatment? What does food insecurity look like in our community? What does employment look like in our community? Those are our health factors that are things that, if we impact these things that are on the bottom, then we should see improvements in our health outcomes later on. So when we do a comparison of our data, we, as I mentioned, we compare our county data to our state data, our national level data. We are looking to see, are we faring better, worse, or about the same? And we sort of do this in 5% increments. So if we're, for any given measure, if we're above, if we're 5% better, or 5% worse, we say that's a high need for our community. And then if we're faring 5% lower, we say this is an area where we could, we may not focus as much attention. So let me tell you about the survey results. So we conducted a survey in 2024. We had about 1,200 residents complete the survey. It was web-based and on paper, and we had our staff and community partners help us to distribute that survey. The respondents did skew older. We know our older adults tend to take, and our middle-aged and older adults tend to take the survey. We did do a big push for our young adults, because traditionally we see that they are not taking a survey. So we saw improvements this year in our young adults taking the survey. We have, most of our survey respondents are women. We know that is true in most surveys, that women take surveys more than men. And I'll talk about our focus groups results in just a minute, and that's a little bit different. So the results, our mental health was a priority, you're going to hear me say that a couple of times. So the first question we asked was about, what are your health needs in the community? So the top three were mental health, substance use or alcohol or drug addiction, and then several chronic factors or chronic disease factors fell closely behind heart disease, high blood pressure, diabetes, overweight, and obesity. We kind of put those in the bucket together because they're very, the conditions that set the stage for those are very similar. So those were the top three things that really impacted, that our residents said we need more help on. Then we asked about those, what we like to call social determinants of health. These are our social factors, our environmental health needs. So the factors that our community members said we need to focus on, housing, homelessness or, and poverty, and then availability or accessibility of our healthcare services. So those were the top three that our community members wanted us to focus in on. Let me talk a little bit on this slide about putting the results all together, because it's a little bit busy, but let me focus your attention here on the last four columns. So we did four focus groups to get more feedback from patients or residents that we might not hear from on a survey. So we did a focus group in Spanish, we did a focus group with our Cape Fear Valley employees, we did a focus group with some of our veterans and our, and so with some of our veterans. So those four focus groups, we, because the population is small, we de-identify those, we don't tell you which ones selected what priorities, because we want to keep some anonymity there. But this slide just shows overall, what are the things that showed up across our primary data, our secondary data, and all of our focus groups? So in red, this box, behavioral health, came up on almost all of our surveys and focus groups and in the data. Employment and income, by which I mean poverty and homelessness, fall into this category, showed up again and again. Healthcare access and the quality of care showed up across the board in all of our focus groups and all of the data as an area to focus in on. And then as did, except for in one focus group, physical health, so chronic disease, cancer, obesity showed up in all of our focus groups and survey data as well. So putting it all back together, we have all of this data, but in its context. So we had a stakeholder meeting back in September, and Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Adams were there, and helped with our community members to select priorities. So we presented all of this data to them, and then they, in public health, we like sticky dots and chart paper, and we did lots of voting on what these priorities would be based on the data. And the stakeholders selected three priorities, maternal infant health, physical health, and then behavioral health, including mental health and substance abuse. So that doesn't mean that we won't focus in on those other things, but these are our priority areas that are going to be used to inform our community health improvement plans, as well as our strategic plan with the health department, some actions that we're going to take, our quality improvement work. This is where we try to make sure that we are putting time and attention in. So our next steps for our community health assessment, again, this is just the first step. So we will have a final report that'll be finished here in the next couple of weeks. That report will be back available to the public on our website, and then we will work with our community partners to collaborate on those community health improvement plans. So what are the actions that we're going to take to address the priorities in all of those areas? And again, our hope is that, this is not a document that sits on the shelf. We share this out with our community partners. Oftentimes, they use this to write grants. So we use it at the health department to inform and write grants and bring dollars into our community. We use it, other agencies use it to make their own strategic plans and their own strategic priorities. So it's a very, it is a, it is a paper document, but it is also one that is in active use across many of our different partner agencies to put into action. So I'll pause there and see what questions you all have.
Commissioners, questions for Dr. Green, Commissioner Tyson, and I'll get to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So under, under slide 15, when we go to our findings review.
Yes.
The secondary data sources, is that data that's collected by partner agencies, is it census data? Talk to us a little bit about what, where that data is coming from.
Yes, that's not necessarily partner data, but it is some of our bigger national data sets. So data from the CDC, data from our state health department, so, and it's going to be data that we can, is available to us at the county level. So some of this is, let me go back a couple more slides, the county health ranking data, so we look at data in all of these different areas, and then in addition to our state level data, or data from our state health department. So lots of different sources.
So next step in terms of, so we've got this, which is really the community's response in telling us, hey, this is the prioritization as we see it reviewed, which is really good.
Yes.
Does that mean you take those other data points in conjunction with this, and we use that to kind of tie that together? Kind of talk to us about what your next step is?
Yes, so we take, so these three priorities, we will take and make action plans for each of those, and the indicators will give us an idea of, are we making progress on those areas? So we have measures, and under maternal health, we look at, for example, low birth weight, are we making maternal mortality? We take measures for each of these three priority areas and see if we're getting better, and make sure that we have a plan in place for all of these. This is work that we already do. We have our Cumberland Naval Response Team, we have a perinatal task force, we do a lot of work around physical health, chronic disease, diabetes, and then those measures will help us to see if we're making improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Farrakhan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this is something we do, what, every three years, five years?
That's correct. Every, we do it every three years because the hospital needs it for their IRS requirement.
Right, I understand they do. And, you know, I'm disappointed in the number of responses, and I don't know how to get that number up, but I'd be a lot more comfortable with 12,000 than I am with 1,200. And in particular, it's skewed toward older women. And again, we're the youngest county in the state, we just showed that your statistic that our median, was it median age? It was 31 here. And so I'm thinking if we got more of those 25 to 44-year-olds, this might look a lot different. And I'm leading to say this, is there a way to get a larger response? Can we do actual scientific polling? I know that costs money, but it might be worth it the next time we take this on. And what, when you just, when you put surveys out there online and so forth, what did you expect to get back? And did you consider any, going any deeper with it?
So this is, actually, we had the most surveys in the state. So this is, so this is, and I'm not saying that is a good thing, that is, we, our county, and I should say, Sheena Butler is our health education supervisor, and Tamara Morris is sitting in the back as our deputy health director, and so their team leads this effort. So in survey, it doesn't feel like a lot to, I know, sitting in the room, it's like a thousand surveys out of our 300,000 people, but when we, when we think about sample sizes for surveys, we typically want at least 1,000. And so we exceeded that. And so we certainly want to do, we'd love to have more surveys, but our target was at least 1,000. And we worked with an entity called Health ENC to help us to do the work of helping us to distribute the survey. When we, to give a little bit of context, when we did this in 2021, we did it during COVID, and we were at our, if you remember, we were at the Crown Coliseum doing drive-through testing, and we were giving every- When we, to give a little bit of context, when we did this in 2021, we did it during COVID. And we were at our, if you remember, we were at the Crown Coliseum doing drive-through testing. And we were giving every person that got a COVID vaccine a survey. And we got just about the same number of surveys this, that time. And so, and we didn't have a sort of a captive audience. So while we want more surveys, certainly that is about what we expected to get. And based on the timeframe, we had to collect surveys. But to your point, that's also why we don't just rely on this survey data. We, you get input from our primary data that have these bigger national data sets. That's why we do the focus groups to get populations that we don't typically hear from. And that's why we also do the stakeholder input, because they might say, yeah, you had 1,200 people that took the survey. But if we look at it, you know, based on their professional experience in the field, they might have a different response. That's why we put all of the different data sources together to make those priorities. But yes, we all want more surveys. I know, I know. It feels.
I'm saying it every time, but I just can't believe with this young and this unhealthy, I just can't believe.
And we, we are, but we also have other factor, we are relatively young county, but we also have a lot of other factors that impact us. I mean, you all are familiar with them. Our, we have a high rate of poverty. We do have for broad care, that means we have a decent in comparison insurance rate, but the access to care. We have a shortage of medical providers in some of our areas. So we have some unique factors that make us different than an Orange County or a, I don't have to tell you all that, or Durham County that makes our factors just a little bit different. Well, we will, we will, I know, it feels like a smaller number. So we strive every year to get a little bit more and a little bit more surveys.
Vice Chairman Jones?
I was just going to speak to you about what Commissioner Fairclough was saying. Do you all ever give these surveys like to Methodist and Campbell University and FTCC or partnership with Fort Bragg?
Yes, they do. They help to push out the surveys as well. And they actually give it, some of the professors will give it to their students, make it part of their coursework. So we work with all of the universities to do that. And then we'll do a focus group with students as well to get that perspective.
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner?
Real quick, Dr. Green, so I'm going to piggyback a little bit on Commissioner Fairclough. I think it would be helpful when we do surveys or market research to be reflective of the demographics of the community. And sometimes you need to continue to survey until we get to that number, and that defines success versus a number of 1,000 as a sample. And I'm not sure that this is reflective of our community.
So that's why we also, so we, yes, we take that into account. So that's why we do the focus groups, because we know that we have, for example, we have the survey in Spanish. But we also know that people, for a lot of different reasons, might be fearful of taking a government survey. And so that's why we do the focus group to try to capture those populations that might be underrepresented. So what we typically do is about halfway through the survey period, we will look to see which groups are undersampled, and then we'll do some targeted outreach for those, for those populations. So we get a report back during the survey period, and I want to say it's eight weeks or three, I think we did maybe two months or three months of surveys or timeframe. We will get a demographic report, and then we say we are underrepresented in this area. And then we'll try to push out more to Methodist or FTCC to get more survey results in those particular areas. But I agree with you that those are things, areas that we are working to approve. So we don't, we didn't do that all the way here in a lot of depth. But we do look at the demographics throughout the survey period to see which areas we want to survey more. And we'll, we'll do that each time to make sure that we are, to try to get this a little bit more representative.
So Dr. Green, I understand what you're saying is with the focus groups, the secondary, the big data, and then our surveys, that you, you feel you've gotten as close to the demographics of the community as possible to give us accurate results? So they're not skewed to a certain demographic or other, to an older demographic, to whatever that demographic may be?
Yeah, I think so. I think so, even though I think the survey is just one piece of that. And then the stakeholder meeting was really important because, and let me get maybe say a few folks that were in the room for the stakeholder meeting. Of course, our commissioners, but also our school system. We had several of our social servants, agencies that were in the room, folks from our criminal justice system that were in the room to give, and then also just some community members as well, to give maybe some context for things that we are not picking up on. And anecdotally, these, the priorities track with what we hear in the community. And I know that's not scientific, but when we, when I think about the things that we hear again and again and again in our community meetings, these are the things that we are, that I often hear about when people say, what are we, what are you all doing about vaping? Or what are you all doing about mental health? What are you all doing about maternal health? We have a shortage and a crisis. This is in line with the things that we are hearing from community members when they reach out to us with their concerns. So it is not exactly, you are right. It is not, we're not getting it published in a scientific journal. But I think this is reflective of what, what we've heard from people say.
And so my last point of that, and I'll get off this point, because I just want to make sure we're looking at the community as a whole. So not just from a demographic standpoint, but from a locality standpoint as well. So all our survey results are concentrated in the city of Fayetteville. They're across the county. And so what I'm understanding, what I'm hearing is, based on the blending of all this data, that you feel you've got a document or the data set that you needed that is reflective of the community to make these decisions that we're making, where we're investing resources and we're investing and we're making decisions on the health of our community.
Yes, I do feel that way. And, and I should say, some of our, when we do our stakeholder meetings, we did have representation across our municipalities. So we didn't just have folks from the city of Fayetteville. We had agencies that serve our surrounding counties and some of our elected officials that were in surrounding counties to come to the meeting so that their perspectives are also here. And then, and then I'll say for people that are looking at these priorities and going, well, that's not my agent, that doesn't track with what my agency does. We also, these are not the only things that we work on at the Health Department. We have a strategic plan that reflects a lot of different areas and priorities. But these are the three things that we really hone in on. And we put resources, frankly, into a lot of different health topics, as you know. So I don't want anybody to feel like, well, these are the only three things that the Health Department is going to start working on in our community as we have a broad scope of services that we do. So I want to make sure for the public that they know that too.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you so much. So when you get these surveys back, speaking of, since you said you do have collaboration with the different, you know, universities and military. So for instance, 1,200 surveys. So when it comes back, is it broken down to say, for instance, 500 we know come from military, 300 come from, from the universities? And I state that to say, since this is all, you know, collaborative together, I think that gets more of a general consensus of those age groups. So like, for instance, like I said, 1,200, is 500 coming from college perspective, collaborative? And then the other 200 for military? Is there any breakdown for when you all get this back to know that?
I'm going to look to Sheena and Tamara a little bit. We get the number, we ask on the survey if they have a military history, I believe, and we, but we don't ask them if they're stationed here. And we don't ask them what college or university they attend, because we want to keep the survey a little bit anonymous. So we don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, but we don't ask about their college attendance. We ask if they have college education. And we ask them about what's your highest level of education? So we get a reflection of that in that manner. But we don't ask them, are you currently, do we ask them if they are a current student?
We ask them about if they've ever been to college. And then all of the questions of the surveys are included in the report. So you can see the questions that they've been asked as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you all a copy of the survey. I'm just trying to think, I don't believe that we ask them, I know we don't ask them about their college of current attendance. We do ask them if they've been to college. So we can assess education level as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Dr. Green, County Manager, anything else?
No.
Dr. Green, thank you so much for the presentation and the work that you do in the community. And congratulations, and we'll properly recognize you in the future, but thank you and congratulations.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
We'll go ahead and move to item three, consideration of agenda items. And we'll move to item A, the 2025 FY26 federal legislative agenda. I'll pass it to County Manager Greer.
Yes, Chairman Devereux. At the January 30th and 31st Strategic Retreat, Board of Strategic Retreat, you developed some legislative agenda items. Sally Schut, Assistant County Manager, will present these items and answer any questions you may have.
Hi, good afternoon. Ron Hamm is also joining us and Leslie Mazinga. Ron, of course, is the President and CEO of Hamm Consulting Group. Leslie is the President and CEO of Strategics. They partner together as our federal consultants. And Ryan Murphy is with Strategic. He is the Governmental Affairs Advisory Advisor. So our team works very closely with this group, including Lisa Jane, our Grants Manager, and Faith Phillips. So Ron gave you that update on January 30th. He's going, a lot has happened in two weeks, so he's going to just take a few minutes, and I will turn it over to Ron.
Ron, do you need about an hour or?
I need about, I need the rest of your afternoon. I think it's done fairly, I think, quickly, and I get some discussion. First, I want to say that Ryan and Leslie are joining me. Leslie's joining me from the road. So she's been out, you know, dealing, you know, working with people in terms of their federal, federal agenda, federal agenda plans for the upcoming year. So again, it was great to see everyone there last week. I did see some folks at the North Carolina City and County Managers Association meeting. Enjoyed the visits there as well. In regard to Washington DC, so there are three things I want to really cover today. One would be the federal funding freeze. I said I would put that at the top, because I know that's the one that is critically important to the county. When I was there, of course, we knew, we know that the memo had come down. Of course, the memo was, the memo from OMB off the management and budget was rescinded. Of course, since that time, things have been wrapped up in the courts. This Tuesday, there was another, I think it was before the B C Court of Appeals, they rejected the administration's request to pause, to pause federal funding. So the funding should start to flow again. I know the President had a press conference earlier this week and said that he would comply with the court order along those lines. However, there have still been difficulty in accessing some of those funds. And I think there have been multiple ways. If you don't unpause them, there could be what you call clawback, which means that the administration has the right to retain funds that were previously appropriated. I've seen that happen, I think, as it relates to the migrant situation. Of course, in agencies such as EPA, some of the other agencies, people are saying that they are still unable to access those grant funds. But again, that were appropriated. So the bottom line is in the courts, we're looking at here, hopefully sometime soon, to see that funding will start to flow again on some of these programs. And I think the key thing here is it really should have been centered on programs that were incon, that were incongruent with the President's agenda. Of course, a lot of that dealt with Inflation Reduction Act, diversity and diversity and equity and inclusion. So those were the programs that had those, those pieces integrated into them that the administration was saying that we want to really take a look at these, let's pause the funding. However, many more programs were, ended up being caught in that net. So again, we're watching this. I do believe there's going to be a preliminary injunction hearing on February 20th, on February 20th, which will, there'll be more discussion along the lines of the future of the funding freeze. But I think the administration is going to continue to seek the ability, you know, to control those funds and to determine what can come out, go out the doors funding and what will not go. Again, we'll continue to watch that. I will say too, that NACO is playing a major role in that. We, I think there's a big call later on this afternoon in terms of strategy around dealing with the funding freeze. What I will say is I just spent two and a half days on Capitol Hill, meeting with members, Democrat and Republican. What I, one of the things that they really advise their constituents to do would be to, you know, review your ongoing and pending federal grants. And so that you can access the exposure that you might have as a result of the freeze. So really, the grants that you would have that would be pending, we want to know. I know we've talked to Lisa, we've talked to Sally about that. But I think it is important that we can share that information with the congressional delegation and even probably through the state association. And NACO was mentioning too, that I think they want to try to compile all of those things to really put something together to show the nationwide impact on counties from the funding freeze. Engaging with the federal agencies. Luckily, I had another client that had a grant that's pending. And I didn't think I was going to get a call back from a federal agency to talk about pooling grants. However, I did, I got a response in less than 20 minutes. So again, if there are agencies, and we can work with Lisa and Sally along those lines in terms of grants that we need to reach out to, to sort of find out, hey, what's the timeframe for the awards? Where are we in the evaluations? We can find that out, we'll do the best we can to find that out from the agencies. And I would say, if you have any obligations and disbursements that need to be done on federal monies that you have, you probably want to do that as soon as possible. And again, you guys do a great job with your grants, so I don't worry on that end. But I think the key thing that we need to be able to do is to communicate back to the congressional delegation of the impacts that this freeze is having on, on the county. So that's the first part. I could take questions or just continue through my updates on the next few things that I'm going to do. It's, I'll do whatever you guys want me to do at this point. So the next issue then is the federal funding that expires on March 14th. Really, with this funding freeze, I think that's complicated the negotiations around the current year funding. Of course, one, a continuing resolution now. And there had been some talks before by the four major appropriation appropriators in the House and the Senate to go ahead and get a bill finished, a year-end bill finished, that of course would include member projects and other, and other legislative wins that some of the people that would be departing would want to see, or that have departed would want to see done. So we're watching that. I did hear today, though, that there could be some positive, some positive moves in terms of getting to a funding bill. However, I would say too, that there are quite a few members, I think on the Republican side, who would like to see a continuing resolution just to say, hey, no more spending this year, let's just keep it at where we are, let's just start new FY26. So that's something to watch, because you have programs that are currently funded with FY25 funding. So we're watching that. We're hopeful that they will come to an agreement on that. I think the bottom line, we may hear something on that next week, so we'll keep, keep you posted along those and along those lines. The last thing I want to talk about is the reconciliation process. Very complicated process. Basically, it's a parliamentary procedure that would allow the easier passage of legislation that's really related to the budget and more so is in the Senate. So at this point, for reconciliation, I think the Senate has passed its budget resolution. The House is negotiating their budget resolution. What happens with that is once you do the budget resolutions out of the committees, they then go to the House and Senate floor respectively. And then there will be legislation that is drafted. House and Senate will consider that legislation. And then there are some rules around revenue and spending. And the bottom line, this bill will go to the President. It'll be finally passed, and then it'll go to the President. The key thing here, though, to remember is you, there is no need for a filibuster of 60 votes in the Senate. It's just by simple majority, as a result of the trifecta, meaning the administration's Republican, House is Republican, and the Senate is Republican. And of course, these bills will allow for tax cuts. I think the Senate is addressing border security and energy policy within their bills. The House, two bills, and then the House is proposing one bill, where they want to take care of tax cuts, border on defense spending, and the mandatory programs. So that's important, because this has been something that the President and the Republican Party want to expedite it. And they are moving along those lines to do that. And the last thing, I said one more thing, is that David Rousa, who's been tremendously supportive of our request to enhance water infrastructure in the county. He is still on the House Climate and Infrastructure Committee, but he has moved up. He is now Chair of the Highways and Transit Subcommittee. So that doesn't mean he can't help us on water, because water is still under the jurisdiction of that committee. But he will be in place to help with transportation projects for the region. And we've had a great relationship with them, and we are planning visits with all of those members when the chairman is up and the chairman and the other, the managers are up, and other commissioner, when they are here in DC for NACO. But those are the things that I wanted to quickly cover and look forward to any questions you may have. And if I left out anything, Leslie or Ryan, feel free to add in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to cover questions for that brief before we get into the agenda?
Probably.
Okay.
Yes, it might be better to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Tyson, I'll reserve questions to the end. Any other questions for Ron on what we were just briefed on? Any good news, Ron?
No, I was meeting, and I met with even a committee chair this last week, actually a committee chair that would have jurisdiction over some of the things we're talking about. And I think the key thing here is no knee-jerk reactions to any of this. I think the other, because there is going to be guidance that will be coming from the agencies and from the administration. And the other thing is I do, some of, I think there will be opportunities in some of these areas to still accomplish some stuff. As dreary as it looks now, you know, there will be, I think, one thing I will tell you, I met with a number of Republican offices, and they were already talking about appropriations and things they want to do in their districts from the standpoint of appropriation. So, I think everything is not necessarily shutting down here, but I think, you know, you're going to have to be strategic, and we'll see what, where the rules are laid out in terms of where there could be opportunities, whether it's in the infrastructure area, whether it's in the public safety area. I think it's very clear in terms of what this administration and what Congress is going to be focusing on, so I think some of your priorities will align to those things. So, we'll, hopefully, you'll bring them some good news when you show up to NACO, and we can, you know, convince them as why they should invest further in Cumberland County. So, anyway, it's not all doom and gloom, although it makes seem like that in the meetings.
So, a couple of things before we get into the agenda. First, thank you for the insights. We, I know, I was just in an earlier meeting today, just talking about the ebb and flow of what's happening in DC right now. So, appreciate the engagement with our staff to make sure that we're trying to be on the leading edge of this as much as we can be so we can adjust as needed, especially as we move into the budget season. And a second point, I know we're going to go through the agenda. I guess I would just encourage us to be very strategic about what we place on the agenda, be very focused, and look at the, where our priority alignment that came out of our, our priorities that came out of our strategic planning, where they align with what we're seeing with this Congress and this administration's priorities, and again, to be probably less is more, and to be very focused, I think would be beneficial as we start walking through this agenda. So, there may be some items that we maneuver on this before we go final.
Yeah, and I'd just say one more thing. On the strategic planning, that's really important. Members look at that as a way to say, hey, you know, these people are really thinking about what they want to do, and they're trying to align their priority. They'll have a direction. We did some of that this week, talked strategic planning with some other folks, and the members took to that very well. So, that could be part of your talking for them when you're up here.
Good. Commissioner Tyson, you have something before we start?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo your sentiments as well, and we had a good strategic planning session that was ran very well. It was much needed, but I know, you know, some of the priorities we set, there's, you know, some of our leadership, like for example, our Sheriff's Office was not able to be involved in our strategic planning process. So, having some input on our agenda items specifically, we have Dr. Green here as well, you know, from our Public Health Department. So, having, you know, some of these items more targeted and specific to our community instead of, you know, making a statement that's, hey, we support this. What are we specifically asking for, I think could be very helpful, especially if you're presenting it to an elected official and you're asking them to take action. So, I just reiterate, voice my support for that sentiment, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions before we move, or comments before we move forward?
Yeah, I just had one. If I could jump in briefly and let me know if you can hear me or not. And I would say that we have been meeting with officers of Rousa and Hudson this week on other business, but they've been super supportive during the transition, and so I would encourage you to continue to communicate through, again, Lisa and Sally do an excellent job, but any kind of transitional pains that we're experiencing during this time, and so you can be specific in communicating that to our representatives as well in the meantime, between now and when you come to DC.
Okay. So, we have, before you, I have updated what's in the agenda packet that breaks down the items under the strategic priorities that you established at your planning retreat. So, under enhancing health and wellness, top priority of water infrastructure to secure funding to bring safe, regulated water to the contaminated areas, and also the area of mental health, to secure additional funding, supportive services, and opportunities for job placement, workforce development for individuals with mental health and substance abuse challenges. We just heard Dr. Green present that that was, is one of the key areas under our health assessment. In public health, Dr. Green had brought forward WIC program enhancements to support this, to fully fund the WIC program so that we can-
We're on public, you've got that on the same.
Sorry, I went too quickly.
That's okay.
There we go. To fully fund the WIC program allows to continue to serve the current and prospective participants in that program, to establish a permanent virtual option. That funding will end September 2026, so we'd like to continue to support that. And also investments in the WIC's breastfeeding peer counselor program and farmers market nutrition program, which would improve nutrition support to families on WIC, and also boost the economic support for local farmers and small vendors. Under social services, these are areas, the main areas of child welfare initiatives, program protection, just, you know, advocating that we continue to protect and not have unfunded mandates being passed down to the county, and healthcare and aging services because not only in Cumberland, while we are a young population here, we still have agings, a lot of veterans who are here and supporting the Older Americans Act and Elder Justice Act initiatives. And then veterans, we have been seeking continued federal funding for county veteran services offices. That has been a key goal that we continue to have. Ensuring a safe community, this is the one the Chairman mentioned about the Chairman's, the Sheriff's Office, seek funding for training in operational improvements at the detention center, technology, the area of prioritizing this mandated specialized services our Sheriff's Office gives. Champion responsive and transparent government, our communications office is facing a deadline at April 2026 to be in compliance with the Department of Justice mandate for ADA accessible communications content. So, in that, we're like counties of jurisdictions over 50,000. Our deadline is April of 2026 to bring our digital communications and all communications platforms to make them ADA compliant. So, we're seeking funding and assistance for that. Under encouraging quality, smart development, to seek infrastructure funding to address the capacity issues in our landfill, the PFOS removal that we have in our leach aid, and also organic waste processing. We mentioned transportation and continue to support that the I-685 come through Cumberland County with a connection at I-295. In the strategic priority area of fostering economic prosperity, the workforce area to expand childcare tax credits and support for childcare providers, and in the area of agricultural, this would be a policy request that the USDA Farm Service Agency include payment triggers that tie back to input cost for the farmers that will help them as with their economic issues.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Yes. So, the USDA, the Farm Service Agency there, right now, their payments for their different programs do not calculate in their input cost. So, this is something that our, the agricultural community has talked about, and so we're bringing forward that goal.
Thank you.
So, those, that's for the agenda, and so ready for your feedback in narrowing and prioritizing.
Thank you for the information. I'll open it up to commissioners. Comments, questions? Commissioner Faircliff?
My first shot is, this list is about 10 times the size of what it should be. Probably need to get this down to about three, so they got something to focus on. Probably prioritize what our first three are, our top three are, and taking them to Washington next month.
Commissioner Faircliff, anything else? We're going to look to prioritize.
Well, I mean, but I mean, you got, once you prioritize, when are you going to cut?
I think that's, I think that's our discussion of the board today, for sure. Commissioner Patel?
One thing I noticed that wasn't on here that is a top priority, and for our community, if we were looking at our top two, three, obviously, I agree with the safe water being number one, but there's nothing here reflecting any, anything for education. So, as we look to our school system, we're trying to support their multiple needs.
Would that be to fully fund impact aid, what?
Just, I mean, I think we need to include something, whether it's to help supplemental pay. I don't know if we can get dollars or funding, rather, for any maintenance or capital, but if there is an opportunity there, but it would fall under infrastructure, I suppose. Just anything that could potentially help forward, maybe on education basis.
So, can I just say something? On the education piece, as you've heard, they've talked about eliminating the Department of Education here, wanting to block grant, if anything, block grant monies back, especially for K through 12, and they also have talked about looking more on the local side to fund K through 12. I would say too, in terms of maintenance and capital, some years ago, we were able to look at getting those kinds of construction dollars and capital, but that's not something that the committee funds at this particular time. And I say the committee, I mean the education, the Education Appropriations Committee. So, anything on the capital infrastructure side would need to be local or state. I mean, you could put it here for them to know that you're supporting your school district, but not necessarily ask out of Washington for that.
Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I actually do agree most definitely with Commissioner Patel, and also because of the fact that up here where it says mental health developmental disabilities, that's in regards to, we were speaking of a different factor, which this is for adults, but I do have concern when it comes to education because there are some grant-funded programs for the mental health team in our education system here. We had a meeting with the Cumberland County School System Board, and that was one of their concerns, and in regards to they actually, their mental health team at the Cumberland County School System, they depend very much on a federal grant. I know, I appreciate you giving us the update for those grants. So, education definitely would be, in regards to grants that they are receiving, I have a concern, and I appreciate Commissioner Patel bringing that up because that was a concern that they did bring to us, number one, especially with their mental health team being in jeopardy of losing a mental health grant, and not only that, but that also includes special needs children as well. That's my input on that.
Commissioner Jones, could you, so it might be helpful, I think, as Ryan stated, I stated earlier, to get a list of the things that are, the grants that could be impacted by this freeze from the school system.
Okay.
We can share that information. And as I said, I've been able to reach some people in, in the Department of Education, but it may be helpful to have a list of what those resources are that are at risk that would threaten their ability to serve this particular population.
Well, I appreciate that. I'll make it a point to discuss this with their chairman of their board as well as Dr. Conley, where we'll make sure our staff gets that information. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really a comment. As I stated earlier, you know, we had a good strategic planning session, and I think we were really able to set the 60, 80,000-foot view within that session. But to your point, we need whatever we're going to communicate to our federal partners to be very targeted, very specific, so they know exactly what we're asking for and what's associated with that. So, you know, one of the things that I'd like to propose that the commissioners consider, and I understand that this agenda's got a time specificity to it because of the budgetary cycles that we go through, but one of the things that may be helpful as the role that I serve as your Policy Committee Chairman, is that we have a chance to review this at the committee level, bring in some of those stakeholders, have Dr. Green come in, have, you know, Ms. Jackson come in from Social Services, have the Sheriff's Office come in, and help provide input so that these can be very targeted and very specific. I would also say if the board would have, that would be the pleasure of the board, you know, of course, any commissioner that doesn't serve on that committee, I would invite them also to help take, take part in that process. But that would be a recommendation that I would like the board to consider as a possible way that we can make this really have a direct ask specific to what we do.
Anything else?
That's it.
So, timing of this, as I think would be a potential issue with that, and I understand that would be a good flow for it to come through our committee structure. Correct me if I'm wrong, a suspend your, should this, their staff input, this has been driven by staff input, if I remember?
Yes.
Different departments had input into this?
Yes, the department heads submitted their request, and we did calls with Ron and his team. So, Ms. Jackson and Dr. Green and the different department heads have submitted. And that's why, for example, Dr. Green focused hers on the WIC program, and then Ms. Jackson also serves on one of the NACO committees for advocacy, and so she has provided these. Also, this helps guide our grant process as well, so that as we're looking, of course, we get the grants updates, and then Lisa shares those out, but it helps us know these are under your strategic areas, and then what grants to be in federal funding that we're looking for. So-
Yeah, so, I was going to say, I mean, one of the ways when you look at this too, I mean, if, you know, you have the top priorities, but, you know, if we were to go back through this and sanitize this more, you know, the things, I'll be honest, that you would be looking for appropriations or grants would be, those should be at the top of this list. And then down below, you can have the policy areas, because quite a bit of this is policy-related too. So, you know, that doesn't, those are things that are ongoing, whether it's through regulations, whether it's going to be through legislation that we'll be working on anyway. But that may be helpful if you do, you say, hey, these are the top priorities. Once you figure out what those are, put those at the top. And I'll, the other issue with this too, is if it does come to what we call an earmark and a direct spending process, you then have to make those decisions anyway in terms of what your top priority is going to be. For example, it's been water for quite water for quite some time, you know, so you sort of know where you're going to go to look for that funding. But I would say, you know, maybe take the top three things, and then the rest of the, you know, could be tied to grants and then be tied to policy. So, I think maybe looking at it that way might be helpful.
So, let me make sure I understood what you just said, Ron, because this is how we structured it for our state delegation, that we looked at funding, and then we looked at policy.
Yes.
But what you're saying is take our top three policy pieces, put them, our top three priorities-
Funding.
Funding, and put them up top, and then we can speak to the policy. And then what I would say is the, in addition to what you said, kind of in supplemental, because I want to kind of keep this short, in supplemental would be that staff input that is going to help drive a lot of the grants. So, in the, you know, in the details or in the weeds, so to speak, but as we're looking at water infrastructure, the question I would have is, as we begin to put dollars to this, we're going to need, you know, some assistance and direction on amount, I mean, we just, for example, water and sewer, as we talk about water infrastructure, we've got a $1.4 billion estimated price tag. As we talk about water infrastructure, we've got a $1.4 billion estimated price tag. So let's begin to eat that, I don't want to say elephant, let's begin to, let's begin to look at what part of that we're asking for. Because one of the things that I talked to or we talked to the state delegation about, and the way I'm trying to frame this is there's different revenue streams and so everybody has a piece of this. It's not asking the federal government or the state government or local government to shoulder all the burden, that there's revenue streams that flow in. So helping craft this, and then to my follow up to that, it seems like we need to do a little bit of work on this. And that's not a, that's a, that's not a direction that the staff effort and actions on this. I think it's just us probably as a newer board, a little focused on the state delegation because they were in front of us. So the timing of when we'd want to kind of have this solidified would be, would be a question. This federal agenda, when do we need to have it? I mean, could we have it as a, if we work through it and bring it to our March 7th or March 5th meeting for approval? Is that enough time still for you guys to begin to be able to maneuver through it?
Yeah, so I mean, there are a couple of things and we've done this in the past and Leslie maybe can speak to this or agree. But, you know, we've had clients who've come at that particular time and even if it's not completely, complete, complete, we could have at least a summary of it if you needed that much more time. But typically, you know, we will have you present it, you know, when you're here for NACO. That's March 4th. However, again, even if we need to give them a flyer on what the final would be, because I'll be honest with you, in terms of the appropriations process, there's no guidance yet in terms of which bills are going to be open, what accounts are going to be open. So to be honest with you, the focus is really on this reconciliation, funding freezes on the funding for FY25. So if you need a little bit more extra time, I think we would, we would be okay. The key thing though would be what things would you want to ask for funding for through the appropriations process? You probably want to have an idea about that. I know water has been at the top of the list, you know. So if that's the case, I think we're in good shape. But if you really want to refine it more, I probably wouldn't rush necessarily to do it if you, if you really, really, really want to take a deeper dive. Maybe you can, but if you can get it done by the 4th, that would be great because you're going to be here for meetings on that day.
So I think that that would probably be, and we'll get some consensus here from the board, but I think you would see potentially the four priorities. We look at water, water and sewer infrastructure. We look at education, we look at mental health and we look at public safety. And those would be four solid buckets that came out of our strategic planning. Then we could put some, you know, meat around that then we could, because you're only, if we're, when we're up there, we're only going to talk to Commissioner Fairclough's point. We're only going to talk three or four things, really.
Right.
And then the policy can lay in because there's some key policy pieces. With Congressman Rouser now transitioning on to the transportation, this I-685 is critical. We know that's going to start at the state level, but ultimately at the federal level. So we're going to want to have a couple of these policy pieces nuggets that we want to make sure we're putting in front of them as well. So if board, I guess my, what I'm saying, and I'll get to you in a second, one second, Vice Chair. Is if we could maybe work to massage this a little bit, give staff some additional direction based on our input. And then we could massage this a little bit and try to get a draft that we can use when we're up at NACO and then bring it back for final approval on the 7th. Vice Chair.
Thank you so much. This is just more of a comment input. I like that idea, especially March 1st, not trying to rush things. But I think the two might have something to do with one another. I appreciate Lisa sending out the grants and I review those all the time. And reviewing those of that that she sent out for us to look at and that go to our different departments. I think that that would be wise. I noticed a lot of the expiration dates on some of those government grants will be taking place at the end of March and also early April. And again, thank you, Ron, for that update. I don't know what we'll be able to move forward and what will be frozen based on the information you gave us. However, I think that it would be wise to make sure since we do, she gave us a lot of grants, meaning us, meaning the county to look at different departments. And I did just happen to notice a lot of those dates for the grants that needed to be submitted government wise. The deadline, a lot of that was at the end of March and in April, so we want to be mindful of that. That was just an input to take into consideration. And thank you for your work, Mr. Sir.
Other commissioners comments? Any comments on the direction that I'm recommending? And county manager, want to get your input on that if that's acceptable for your staff?
This is acceptable for us.
No, I'm good. I can make a motion if you'd like.
We'll get you in a second. Anything else, Ms. Shutt?
Yeah, I've got water and sewer system, educational funding, mental health and public safety as the top four.
And we'll try to shape on the funding side and then give you some policy side. Again, just, I just want to say this is not a, we're almost doing this, we're having a discussion at this meeting to help you finalize this. We probably have not, I know I personally have not given you the input that I probably should have ahead of this meeting. A little focus on the state side and really, quite frankly, trying to figure out what's going on at the federal level. So I appreciate Ron giving us an update. It's an ever moving target. But I want to be very sensitive to how we approach this, this new norm in DC. Commissioner Fairclough, did you have something?
Just a general comment. I've been with Sally and Ron and Leslie and Ryan. When we talk to these fine representatives and, you know, the more concise and succinct we can be with them, the better. I know, I know last year, they really had not really heard anything much about our medical school. They were very, very interested in that. But, but if we, if we go in there with about four solid topics, I think we'll be in good stead because they'll be very interested in what Cumberland County's doing. And I think I would put transportation in there with that, as you mentioned, even though it's a little premature. That seed needs to be planted because that 685 project, if we can get letters out of our congresspeople going to Raleigh or wherever else they need to go, that would, that would, I think, put us ahead of the game a little bit.
Commissioner Fairclough, I agree. That's kind of what, funding and policies, we kind of put that under that policy to kind of advocate, advocate policy versus the funding for that corridor. I think it's, I think you're exactly right in my opinion. I agree with your statements.
And I'll say on the 685, the city has it on their federal action plan as well. So, you know, they were, we were, the more that they can hear from all of you in the, with that, within, throughout the community is going to be a great thing. So yes, you do, we do want to focus on that. The other thing too is even if you submit this list, we deal, a lot of the work goes on with staff after you have left DC. So we have really good relationships with those folks. So the bottom line is you get to those top priorities. We can fill, we can fill in a lot of the other stuff, you know, with them once you're, once you return home. So that's part of this is having someone here that deals with staff because they actually drive a lot of this stuff. I mean, those members are going to listen to the people that work for them and that's who we work with. So it's not just, that day isn't the end all. It's an ongoing process once you return back to Cumberland County.
Commissioners, any other questions? And I understand I've been on a few of those trips wearing a different hat with Leslie, as I see her laughing. She'll recall. If not, I'll entertain a motion around that direction. Go ahead, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we take no action, we table the 2025 FY2026 federal legislative agenda until our March 5th, 2025 meeting to allow time for input into the agenda to be more targeted and focused and that we advance that ahead of our NACO conference.
Chair, second.
Is that going to be too late? You're going to be in Washington before March 5th?
That's right.
Let's get a second. We'll have a discussion on it. So discussion around the motion. I think your intent is to provide input. We're going to go final on the 5th meeting, but we'll have a document to take to NACO with us.
Yes, that's correct.
And it would be in the agenda packet.
Correct.
For that March 5th meeting before we leave for the NACO conference.
That's correct. So I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Chairman, if that's how you're proposing it.
That's fine. I don't know if you need to table it. We're just directing staff not to bring it back, not to bring it, to bring it to the March 5th agenda with in, with input from.
That's correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That is the intent of the motion.
Hearing that motion has been probably seconded. Any further discussion on it? If not, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand affirmative.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Shutt, and thank you for all the work on everybody that participated in this. To the team on virtually, thank you for what you guys do. Thank you for the constant input. It's critical right now as we're all maneuvering through this. So your communications to our team is critical and it gives us a little bit of a breathing room, so to speak. But we will firm this up and again, Ms. Shutt, thank you. Again, me personally, I should have provided some additional input prior to this meeting, but this is a good opportunity for this board to discuss kind of where we are based on the new norm up there. So we'll go ahead and move to the next item.
Thank you.
Item B, resolution in support of state legislative agenda items. I'll move, County Manager Greer.
We'll turn this over to Chairman Devier.
I don't know what's coming up. So are we pulling anything up? Okay. Okay, so in your packet, you have a, do we need to take a recess? Okay. So in your packet, you should have a copy of the resolution, a copy of the items. The agenda that we went over with the state delegation earlier this week. We just shaped it into the form of a resolution that we can send off to them. Understand that we just speak in resolutions, which is why we're putting in that form. We will still send out one pagers on each of the items and begin to give them a prioritization. I followed up with the, with the chairman, chairwoman of the delegation afterwards on her request for prioritization. And I asked her again for what her appetite was for funding. So we're going to continue to have conversations around those. We'll try to prioritize based on some funding levels that she and I discussed around. But this resolution just reaffirms what we talked to them about at the meeting. So I'll open it up for any discussion or questions.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And certainly understand that taking into account that this is a, an item that we need to go ahead and progress forward, given some of the timing constraints that our state representative had. But, you know, would like an opportunity just to go over with you some of the items and ask some questions since we really didn't have that opportunity with just the board at the legislative session that we had. So a couple of the questions that I have, if I may. Under one, supporting the high performing education system. The board met with our Board of Education. They presented an $806 million infrastructure plan phased over seven years. And so my question about this item is, one, would we not want to focus more on the plan that was presented? Because the school has yet, the school board has yet to come back with their full request to us that includes that infrastructure plan plus their prioritization on school replacement. And so my concern here is we're singling out one facility with a, with an ask as opposed to looking back to the plan that we already have in place that incorporates all 100 facilities that our, that our school system have. So that's one question. I can go one at a time or I can ask.
Are these questions for me, Commissioner Tyson?
Questions for the board in general.
So you want to have a discussion on item one?
Yes.
Comments from the, comments or direction from the commissioners?
I have a comment.
Vice Chairwoman.
Well, my understanding is, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior, prior back when we had made the decision and commitment to this community, meaning prior, I do believe that was back in November, to make sure that E. Smith was a priority and then we all, a priority in regards to making sure that it was my understanding from the research that was done and conversations and town halls. And then I feel like we went to the school board itself. They did exceptional, they did an exceptional, you know, presentation and the breakdown of different schools and what the needs were. So taking in consideration of their data and status, that of also with the community's needing crowd support. I feel like E. Smith definitely needs to be a priority, the main priority school. And I say that to say that the data has showed, not only from the school board, but then that of the concern from the community based on, again, data from what they've shown that the school is definitely in need. And then also based on that of, we have had two other schools and I appreciate that, Jack Britt. And it was a well need for that and also Grace Creek. But there is definitely a need for a school in that particular district, number one. And, and also, you know, as we want to make sure we are doing everything we do for the community, which is why we do not just only data, but we do, of course, you know, community town halls. And I guess that was the concern because definitely now that I've seen the data, that's one of, probably one of the oldest schools here and the condition of its infrastructure and just other things, you know, for safety. I feel like E. Smith definitely needs to be a priority because that was one of the concerns when they had all the town halls. Many people felt like they couldn't understand, and again, I get it, where growth is, as Commissioner Fairclough and many have said. If there's, you know, productivity and there's growth out in the area and, you know, there's, you need to be able to have children in place to go for schools, which is why Jack Britt and Grace Creek came up. But, I mean, and were able to be built before they were able to, you know, take care of the E. Smith situation. But being that it's been a long time coming, the school is, I mean, decapitated, I'm going to be honest, it's in very bad shape. That community in that particular district area, they, you know, they've been waiting and waiting and waiting. And again, I understand and respect, you have to put schools where there's growth to be able for children to go to school. So I feel like it's long overdue, long overdue. And the school, I mean, certainly it's not going to get in any better shape. I appreciate the report that was given from the professionals at the school, at school system. So I feel like that is why the decision has been made and has been focused on E. Smith. And the commitment from the prior board stating that we would make sure that E. Smith was, you know, being transparent, we're in these seats for the community. And the commitment that we made the prior board back in November did state that all schools are important. But we did make a commitment to the community that E. Smith would be the next school for various reasons. So I'm just not one that likes to go back on my word when data shows that. And I'm in the seat, and we all are for the community. So I feel like other schools are important, but if we say we're going to do something and we have data to prove why, it's just kind of hard to, you know, retract and back that up. So.
Anything else, Vice Chairwoman? Commissioner Patel.
Seth, thank you. So I do agree completely with Vice Chairwoman Jones on what the communities shared with leadership over the last couple of years. The one concern I do have, and I think speaks to Commissioner Tyson's point, was when we met with the school system and I know that staff is working to get some clarifying questions on that. Their financial plan that they presented to us did not show a replacement and in their notes did not, it specifically mentioned that their plan did not take into consideration a replacement school for E. Smith. Instead, there was around a $12 million maintenance plan surrounding E. Smith for seven years, within the seven years. So I just want to make sure if we're going to push this forward, we just have alignment with the school system's plan and our plan. That way the, our state delegation knows where to kind of look for the dollars.
Other comments?
Yes, I would, I would ask, when, when do we need this legislative, legislative agenda for our state? There she is. Thought you were up there.
The local bills are due for submission on February 20th.
February 20th, so we have one more meeting between now. Is, are we likely to get any kind of prioritization from the Board of Education prior to that time, prior to getting this to them?
I believe what the Board of Education has provided us is what we're going to have.
That's going to be it?
At our meeting, did we not have some additional ask or have they already sent that over? I thought that, meaning as Mr. Tyson did state, I thought there were some items that we did request at the Board of Education. So have those already came through and forgive me, and perhaps I didn't see those?
And forgive me, and perhaps I didn't see those. But I know that we did ask for certain things to be sent over, and Commissioner Tyson had asked for some. So I just want clarification on that.
I'm unaware, and staff, I'll direct it back to County Manager, but I'm unaware of any items that we spoke to, that we asked for has come back to us.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did ask, and we haven't received that, that I've seen. But my other point is this, the infrastructure study did make certain recommendations. One of that was to look at consolidation. There was a utilization component to that study. We haven't heard back from the school board. Do they plan to do that consolidation officially? So, you know, again, with us targeting and saying, hey, we're going to build a school, there hasn't been a discussion around redistricting or consolidation. We don't know if they're going to take all of those recommendations that are within that study. It just feels like it's a little premature before they even submit their requests to us as a whole. And that's my only comment.
So Commissioner Tyson, am I understanding that you'd like to strike this item?
I'm saying that education is important, is part of our strategic plan, is part of what our initiatives are. But if we could broaden that item to point towards the infrastructure study that we already have in place and that we can show and document, if we're not going to have that additional information in time to make this request included in the legislative session, then I think we have to go to Commissioner Fairclough's point with the information that we have in hand.
Hold on one second. So Commissioner Tyson, what would be your pleasure for that, for that ask? Are you prepared to make that at this time?
Yeah, so what I would say is, if we're looking at that infrastructure plan, and since this is for the 2025-2026, it may be more appropriate to ask for the funding for year one of that plan. Because we know that those infrastructure deficiencies are already there. We're not talking, I mean, we're talking about roughly the same amount of money, but instead of it going, hey, we're going to make this replacement before we have that official ask, we can just fund the first year of that plan.
Vice Chairwoman?
I would like to, I guess, make a friendly, just as a suggestion. Okay, yeah. I don't know if I need to make one, but I would like to be able to see if our staff could give them, when does this report do, the ask and what we asked them? I would like to give the school board the opportunity, the staff, to be able to reach out before we make these other decisions and that of what we did ask or a list, I'm asking the board members, whatever questions that you want to be asked, ask that we make a list, have the staff send it to them, and just put a date on it when they need to have it back, so that we can, you know, make a decision with all information. So again, I know that there were some asks that were made, and so if all commissioners would be in agreeance to whatever ask that they have, give that to our county manager, have that sent out, and give them a hard stop date of when they need to have it back to assure we can review it and have what we need in, just into the state is something I'd like you all to consider.
I'll let the county manager address.
The school board sent us something early, right before the meeting, a few, maybe an hour, hour and a half before the meeting today. Staff hasn't had a chance to review it. As soon as we get it to review today, I'll pass along the email to all of you all.
Okay. Mr. Fairclough?
We've got a week from today, right, to do, to put something there, to get something into Raleigh?
Well, he just said that we have, they have information, but we haven't seen it yet.
So when are we going to do this?
I'm going to pass along after the meeting. We had it this morning, maybe an hour and a half before the meeting. Staff hasn't had a chance to look at it, review it, make sure it's comprehensive based on your request. As soon as we can do and get out of the meeting, we'll look at it, we'll pass it along to you all, so you have it.
So the information that we briefed the delegation on, the policies, the funding, they can begin to shape those local bills. There's also a placeholder for local bills that they file, that once it's filed, then they've already met the deadline, and then they can go back and amend that bill and change any information they'd like to change. So while I understand the necessity to make sure we have the information to them, we've provided them information now. If we need to modify it, as I mentioned in our discussion with them, we can continue to modify those asks as we move forward, just like I've asked the delegation chair for their appetite for our funding amount. And so that's a dialogue that we'll have, that then we can adjust these dollar amounts as, if needed, as we move forward on the funding side. The policy side, to be able to provide them these policy actions, they can begin to file that, that local legislation and get it in without having to use these placeholders. Vice Chairwoman?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. These asks that we did ask of them from the last meeting, you're stating they have responded of some information that we have just received, correct? It hasn't been reviewed. So they, they did give us what we asked, you all just haven't had the opportunity to review it yet.
Correct.
And I think that's a key, big factor, because
Correct.
That's why I feel like that needs to be reviewed for us to make these decisions, and that was our main concern.
Yeah, we received it this morning.
Okay. And you want to be clear on that.
So before we move forward, I believe that Commissioner Tyson has a couple others he'd like to address. The last comment, and then we can make some decisions once we move through them all. The comment I'll say in reference to funding a new facility versus maintenance, it's very clear in my time in the State Senate that funding for maintenance was not normally used, saw funding for new construction versus maintenance normally. There's more of an appetite in how you package a project, and when you package this in a way that's at the top need of an infrastructure with a veteran population in the district that it's in, regardless of the redistricting, is a packaging of the product. It also, we know we're going to have an overall need, the 850 million or 341, depending on how we want to look at that. The ask around that, when you talk to members of the, of the delegation or even in the General Assembly, they're going to say the responsibility of maintenance and renovations is a county function. New construction is a different animal. When I was in the State Senate, we funded $15 million to Hope County for a new high school. It's an easier ask. I think that's the purpose. There's a strategy behind a legislative agenda and why we do it and the way we do it, from a policy standpoint as well as a funding requirement. And this is the first time on the state level that we've seen, the state policy agenda that we've seen, that we've crafted it in a way that we laid out funding, specific funding requirements with associated funding streams as well as local policy, not general statewide policy. So we'll move forward to the next item. Commissioner Tyson, which one would you like to address?
I think if we're going to get the information from our county manager relating to what the email is from the school system, then I can withhold a comment until we receive that information. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tyson, I've moved past. You said you had a couple of items you wanted to address. I've already moved past the school item. We'll get that information from the county manager following this meeting or once his staff has digested. Are there other items that you mentioned? You said you had a couple items you wanted to address? So is there a second item on the legislative agenda you'd like to address?
I'll reserve discussion till after I get that, that information from our school board, and that'll be fine.
So the rest of the funding and the policy objective, is there any further discussion on the rest of the funding items or the policy items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a quick question. It's not really a, ensuring safe community volunteer fire department service contracts modify the annexation laws, even if local? I just want some more education on that. I'm not disputing that, but I like to be educated on things. I don't want to take up too much of your time. But so, annexation laws, can you just explain that to me, love somebody, please?
So Vice Chairwoman, this is specifically around, and Commissioner Tyson and I spoke to it at the state delegation meeting. So when local, when, when land is annexed into a municipality, normally the municipality, the fire service for that municipality would, would take over the fire service. A lot of times you have the volunteer fire departments, for example, out in Hope Mills that would, has a contract to provide the fire services through, there's a kind of a gray area in the law. And so the intent of this is, is to ensure that through voluntary annexation, that that volunteer fire department is given the ability to have a five-year stay on that contract, so that they can ensure that they manage their budget and their revenues accordingly and be able to provide the services. The reason we had if, even if local, is because a lot of times, while annexation legislation from a statewide is not moved through the General Assembly, local annexation bills a lot of times move. And so there's a flexibility, and it was kind of a nod to the state delegation to say that's how you can move the bill through as a local, as a local bill that's tied to specifically to Cumberland County when it deals with annexation around this policy.
Okay, and is this the one that we'll cover? It might be two different things, but is this the one that would help assure, which I hope it is, if they went to certain areas? I understand that sometimes first responders weren't the fire departments, and volunteers were not being able to get compensated in a certain area? Something came up that Commissioner Adams, or is that was two different things?
So Commissioner Adams brought up the point that if, if a service goes out to, say, I-95, to wreck on I-95, they're not, they're not, because that's not in an area that's covered, they're not compensated for that area. That's an ongoing discussion across the state. You have the same thing with some other providers, including EMS and others. But that's what Commissioner Adams was talking about.
Okay, I was hoping maybe that was in here, maybe the state could help with that, but it's not. But that's okay.
Commissioner Tyson, as a fire commissioner, anything addition to add to that explanation?
No, I think you covered it pretty well. It's, there is no more forcible annexation in North Carolina. So under, under that previous law, if you forcibly annexed an area, then you had to provide that service, and you had to contract with it. So now with it being voluntary annexation, some municipalities have made annexations a requirement to get services. And so because the law says it is voluntary, then they don't have, that rule doesn't have to apply. This would broaden that to include voluntary annexation.
Well, I appreciate that, because we definitely want to make sure that the work that they do, they're provided and covered. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or, or discussion around any of the local policy objectives or the funding? So I know there's a requested action. What I would like to do is, County Manager Greer, what I'd like to do is have further discussion with the board, and then I'll get with you and give direction to move it to one of the agenda items, either to consent or to a regular item of business, once I have any further dialogue or input from the commissioners. Is that acceptable, Board? Any, any question on that, or would you like to move a motion forward?
I'm fine with it. Am I missing something? I've got one local funding request, and I've got three local policy objectives. Is there a two?
Oh, yeah, I see your point.
There are two that got that bad.
It's just one and, one and two, or one and three.
It's just, it could be one and two.
It's a typo. It's a typo.
I don't know if we left the whole play out or something.
It's just, it's just local funding and local policy objectives. So we'll take no action on this, if that's the pleasure of the board. And then, once we determine if we're going to move anything on the education side, we'll either bring it forward to the board and let it be voted up or down at the next agenda session, so we can get it to them in a timely manner, as well as once the County Manager Greer, once you and your staff have reviewed the school information, if you'll provide that out to us. I know that was a topic of discussion yesterday in the Finance Committee as well. Any other questions on this? Any other action the board would like to take on this?
Just a clear question. So if we don't take action on this and move the state delegation resolution to the next agenda meeting, are we still going to be okay to submit anything for the February 20th deadline for state funding, or for local funding?
I'm not, I asked you a question.
So the, the local bills are, the deadline's February 20th, right?
Correct.
So if we don't take any action on this, or can we wait till the next agenda meeting, are we going to be able to?
No, I'm saying we're going to take, we're going to look at action on the February 17th meeting. So we'll have it, ensure any, anything we want to adjust out of this or remove from it, and then we'll give, we can, you can decide that individually, and then we're going to move it forward on the 17th, either in consent or in regular item of business. And we'll take action at that meeting to strike any items or make any adjustments we need to make at that, at that meeting.
You did say the next agenda meeting, you really meant the next meeting.
I'm sorry, the next meeting on the 17th of
Correct.
The next, the next commission, the next commissioner meeting on the 17th. Vice Chairwoman?
I'm sorry, just a quick question. So after, the staff is going to review the most updated information, that they'll send it out to all of us, correct?
The school information, Vice Chairwoman? Yes, ma'am.
Not like Commissioner Adams, and then all of us can see it? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so again, so the action, let me just reiterate again. We're going to take no action on this state resolution. Any input you have, please provide that input to the entire commission. We will move it forward. I will talk with the county manager, request that he move it on, on to the 17th as a regular item of business. And any adjustments we need to make at that time, we'll make it that time based on the will of the council, or will of the commission. As well as secondary, the school information that was just sent in to us, once it's reviewed by staff, that we'll get it in a timely manner, hopefully in the next 24 to 48 hours. Is that clear? Any questions, commissioners?
Probably in the next two hours.
That's even better. I wouldn't expect anything less than you, County Manager. Any, any other comments or clarifications on that direction? Okay, we'll go ahead and move to item C, rejection of bids for sheriff training indoor fire range replacement project.
Yes, Jermaine Walker, Director of Engineering Infrastructure, would present this item. Found a little anomaly in the contract. When we started contracting the process, and Jermaine will give you details and answer any questions you may have, but we wanted to reject the bid and go back out for the end. Jermaine?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The, the item in question just centered around the necessity for bid bonds, and there was just some ambiguity. It was a little unclear. After talking with, with Attorney Moorefield and with purchasing, we agree that to clean up the process, to make it as transparent, to avoid any violations of competition that we would submit it, resolicited for, for bid and as an informal bid.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you. So Mr. Walker, the bids that came in.
Yes.
Have they been publicly made available already?
They have, yes.
Okay, and I would take it that that would mean that the, all the bidders could have also seen the bids? Is that right?
Correct, and we have discussed that.
Okay. You have some concerns there?
No, no concerns. They actually were just looking forward to getting the process. Their greatest concern was just getting ahead of what possible terrorists might be out there and getting the process kind of expedited.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions for, any other questions by the commissioners? Not entertain a motion? Commissioner Tyson?
I move that we reject all the bids from the Earl Butler Sheriff's Training Indoor Firing Range Replacement Project to allow the project to be resolicited for the reasons stated, and move this item to the consent agenda of the boards February 17th, 2025.
Been a motion stated by Commissioner Tyson and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Not, I'll ask for your vote. Affirmative, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Board. We'll go ahead and move to item D, Cumberland County Detention Jail Health Plan. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Heather Skins, Assistant County Manager, would present this item. There's some things that are required by state statute. There's some things that are required by state statute that we communicate to the Board regarding the jail health, detention plan, the jail health plan. And Heather will go over this and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The North Carolina General Statute 153A, 225, and the North Carolina Administrative Code 10A, NCAC 14J dot 1001 require jail health plan, and that to be reviewed annually in January. The jail health plan was developed in accordance with the requirements set forth in the statute and reviewed by the appropriate parties. Currently, Well Path is our jail health provider. We are requesting, and you do have a copy of the jail health plan, we are requesting to move this item to the Board of Commissioners meeting on February 17th, 2025, as a consent agenda, to adopt the jail health plan and allow the chairman to sign their certificate of approval and adoption form on behalf of the Board. I do have Dr. Green here, if you have any questions regarding the jail health plan.
Commissioners, any questions around the jail health plan? Commissioner Tyson?
I do see where, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do see where we had our health director that signed the certificate of consultation. On the back, is it just that you had Ms., is it Ms. Smith that signed separately, or is that why you have two different pages with some signatures missing on it?
That is correct. We reviewed it with her, and actually, she was at the conference, and so we had an opportunity to review it with her again. But we sent her a blank page to sign it, so that she, because I only had the original.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions on the item presented by commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, but I would like to give the Board some advice. I didn't see this one until it got on the agenda, and it was kind of late to do it then, and I'm not, I think it came from the sheriff's office. But the language at the top, it says that the sheriff and Well Path and the health department are responsible for compliance. That's not a statutory requirement, and that is a broad expansion of, and I would need to talk, I'd want to talk to Dr. Green to see if she is aware of that and what arrangements have been made, because they can't even get into jail without permission of the sheriff. And the, this is the units, the governing boards plan to adopt. The health director must approve it after consultation with the sheriff and a list of folks that I'm sure she has done. But just, out of an abundance of caution, I'd ask the Board to, I think the plan's fine, if Jennifer, in fact, if Dr. Green, in fact, has reviewed and approved it, but let's get it signed by her first before the Board adopts it, and let me see if we can remove some language that's not necessary in there, in terms of the compliance aspect.
Commissioners, any questions based on the attorney's comments? Commissioner Tyson?
So just to clarify, Mr. Moorefield, thank you for, for providing that. Is your recommendation to the Board that we don't take action on this currently?
That's correct.
Will allow you to confer with Dr. Green, and then you would ask that the Board bring this back at a time certain?
Y'all may have something I don't have. My package doesn't have anything signed by Dr. Green. Do you have that? Okay, it's just not in my package.
You have a copy at your.
Oh, it was, okay, I didn't realize it was separate, okay. Let me see what you got there.
My copy has one signature. Here it is.
Okay.
If you go to the page before that, and that, that kind of goes back to my question, the rear page, it was because it was done in counterpart, so the rear page just has Ms. Smith's signature, whereas the front page has everybody else's signature. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Vice Chairman Johnson?
And yes, Attorney Rick, Mr. Moorefield, you also stated that you'd like to clear or change some verbiage, or what was that, your statement? I'm sorry about the verbiage. Did you have a concern about?
The language in this handout is not the same language. It's in the package. I'm concerned, because what I've got says, is, was this a supplant? What's on the?
Yes.
Okay, I, I missed that then, okay, all right. Then, it looks like that's been taken care of then, but I just, I did not, the only thing I had looked at was what's in the, when this was published. And then, this was laying here when I got here, but I didn't know that it was a new document.
Yes, when the original document was uploaded, that was a document that the sheriff provided us. They then provided us a revised copy, which is what I handed out today.
Okay, I just, I missed, I mean, I missed that there was a.
Let me, let me dial this back in if I could. So, Assistant Manager Skeens, what's the timing of this document? When do you need to have this signed and completed?
So the statute doesn't necessarily give a specific date. It says it needs to be reviewed every January.
Okay, so I guess my question to Mr. Moorefield, because I have feeling this Board is going to want to ensure that you've touched this new document that has materialized today before we vote on it. And so, if there's not a timing of it, then.
We have a health plan in place that was adopted. It doesn't have to be adopted by the Board every year. It is brought, it has to be reviewed by the health director annually. It's not, there's not a date. And if the health director deems that there need to be changes made, then those changes are recommended to the Board for readoptions. So we're okay to just, you know, looking at what I've got here now, it looks fine, but I just didn't.
So, so my ask would be, if we want to move this forward to the February 17th, as requested by staff, that attorney reviews the document. We have a document that has all signatures that is uploaded, or a final document minus mine.
Correct.
In, in, that is uploaded into the system for the public to see, as well as the commissioners to review.
I think that'll work. I think the, the thing I was really, the language I was really concerned about is not in here, and I was surprised that that would have come from the sheriff's office, so apparently it didn't. So this, I suspect that this is okay, but it, what you're suggesting, Mr. Chairman, I think will work in the terms of, just as long as we upload the correct document on, for Monday.
And so, when we get to that item of business on Monday, and it's briefed, Mr. Attorney, I'm going to turn to you and make sure that you have approved it and you're comfortable with the document.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm not going to sign anything unless our attorney has said it's good. Commissioners, any questions on that, that direction? If, if hearing none or no other questions, I'd entertain a motion around that.
I'll make a motion. I move that we recommend approval of this item, be added to the Board of Commissioners' consent agenda for February 17th, 2025, and to adopt the jail health plan and allow the chairman to sign the certificate of approval and adoption, pending okay by the attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion on the floor to, as out, as stated and properly seconded. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. Raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Assistant Manager and Attorney. We'll go ahead and move to other items. There are no, I'm sorry, excuse me. We'll go ahead and move to Item E. I know you've been hanging out there for a little while. We'll go ahead and move to Item E, tax reevaluation update. County Manager Greer?
Yes, this is the, we've been waiting on the property values since we in revaluation this year. Took a little bit longer than anticipated due to we dealing with a new software system. Even with that, we're only really a week beyond what we earlier anticipated. Joe Utley, Tax Administrator, will provide, go over the values, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Utley. This one.
Mr. Utley, I think you've had the attention of our Board, and you are awaiting the information.
All right, that sounds good. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For those that may not know me, my name is Joe Utley. I've been the tax administrator since April of 2015. I was appointed on April Fool's Day, so I hope that's, it hasn't been a bad omen so far, so I hope not now. But I've been with the county since November of 1992, when I joined as an appraiser. I know that there are several new members on the Board that weren't here in October and November when we presented the scheduled values, and there may be some, and I know there are several that weren't here in 2017 when we presented. So what I wanted to do initially, before I looked at, showed the percent increases in the values, is I wanted to do a few slides that kind of just showed the, some general information about revaluation. And it won't take long to do that, but I thought that was necessary to go through that. Then we would look at some revaluation results, details of assessed value. And then, most importantly, at this point, at the last part of the presentation, we'll be communicating with taxpayers and talking about them, about their values, how they can reach us and appeal for property values if, if necessary. General revaluation in the county is required every eight years in the state of North Carolina, and that is by statute. Cumberland County is currently on an eight-year cycle, and their last revaluation was 2017. Revaluations are simply the opportunity or a statute required to bring our real property values up to 100% of a fair market value on January the 1st of 2025. Once that happens, property values should not change again for that property until the next revaluation, unless there's some new construction, remodeling, renovations, or even demolitions on the property. And of course, those, as those are reported, the values can change. Again, we want to appraise our real property at 100% of market value. And General Statute 105, 283 states that true property of market value is the same as true value, and it actually says that we should be valuing it at true value in money. And again, it equals market value, and this is the statute definition of market value, and I think we probably all are fairly familiar with what market value would be. But again, it would be property that changes hand between a willing and financially able buyer and seller, neither being under compulsion to sell. And the other objective of the revaluation is to ensure property values accurately reflect fair market value, and ensuring the property tax burden is spread equitably amongst all taxpayers. And contrary to popular myth, revaluations are not conducted to raise, raise revenue. And then finally, what the revaluation here includes, we use mass appraisal techniques, and we use a KAMA or computer-assisted software system to help us do that. We do not do the appraisal. Again, we are valuing not one property, but a little over 143,000 properties at one time. In doing this, we analyze vacant and improved sales, and for this revaluation, they're qualified sales. They have to be qualified per the statute, as we talked about, for fair market value. And for this revaluation, we considered over 45,000 qualified sales in establishing our values. We include in this all residential, commercial, industrial properties, and it's all real property. To do the valuing, we develop market, we develop cost, and we develop income models, and they are applied appropriately to the type of property. And most residential properties, we use a sales comparison approach, and we are one of the, I think, one of the few counties that tries to do all the residential property using the sales comparison approach, as we feel like that is most appropriate for that type, for residential. And then, for income-producing properties, we will use the income approach, and for non-income producing commercial properties, we'll use the cost approach. So at this time, I wanted to start sharing some of the values and the percentages. And for 2025, our assessed value is 39 million, 306,000, and, excuse me, 39 billion, 306 million, 445,064. We are subtracting out of that to get a taxable value. We had to subtract out the exempt properties. We had to subtract out exclusions and other tax relief programs. And in doing that, we have arrived at a 2025 beginning taxable value of about $34.5 billion. We do need to be aware that it's important to note that this value, the taxable value, is going to be reduced, or it can be increased every day as we're working tax relief, as we're working elderly exclusions, disabled exclusions, veterans, builder's inventory, and the present used deferment program. And we'll talk a little bit more about those a little bit later. But also, the big one is going to be the result of appeals. With the increase that we're going to see in our county, there are going to be quite a few appeals, so we will be working those, and there's constantly going to be reductions, and there may be some increases. Because anytime somebody appeals, one of three things can happen. Their value can go down, their value can stay the same, or it can go up. If we go out to the property and find improvements there that we didn't know about, their value can go up. And then, there's always legislative initiatives that can reduce the taxable value. I'm not aware of anything right now that could affect the 2025 value, but possibly with the legislature in session now. It could be some for 2026. So to get a little bit more of a look at this, when we talk about the assessed value, the assessed value for Cumberland County went up 64.7%. This is pretty much in line with what the other counties are seeing, depending on whether they're on an eight-year cycle or a four-year cycle. People on a four-year cycle may be seeing a little less of an increase, but again, we're looking at eight years, and so we've had a long time that we haven't revalued property. Our assessed value for 2024, using this 17 rates, was about 23.8 billion, and now you can see that's going up to 39.3 or 64.7% increase, and that's an increase in assessed value of about $15.5 billion in assessed value. Wanted to go through and break it down a little bit more for the county, between residential and commercial, and break that out a little bit more, and then look at the municipalities before going into talking about our communications and stuff with the taxpayers. So the details of the assessed value, this is for the Cumberland County. Our residential went up 86.2%, commercial 27% for a 64.7% increase. To break that down just a little further, residential, this is what we had for single-family, multifamily condominiums and residential vacant land. And I think what we're seeing here, because as you look, multifamily is going up a great deal, as well as condominiums, and I think what we're, what I'm saw and what our staff is seeing is that the market back in 2017 was not as great for those type properties. And now, with the single-family homes going up like they have, people, people are, they're building condominiums, multifamily, they're, the market for those have really blown up, because they can get those a little cheaper than the, the single-family, and so those have gone up quite a bit. Commercially, just broke it down here between the income properties, other improved commercial, vacant land, and industrial properties. We did not see that bump in commercial that we saw in residential. From what I've seen, in the residential, from the pandemic, residential after that point really, really went up. It really grew quickly. And in commercial, with people staying at home, there, the, some of the stores maybe closed. And in commercial, with people staying at home, there, the, some of the stores maybe closed, people ordering more online. We just not, did not see the growth in the commercial that we saw in residential. And we did not see necessarily the same amount of new construction in the commercial that we saw in, certainly in residential. So this is what the percent change is for the municipalities. Excuse me. And we'll break, I want to break that down a little bit on the next slide. And then, of course, I want to talk a little bit about Toddland because you can see that went up quite a bit. So this is the municipalities for residential, commercial, and overall. All the residential properties went up a great deal. Again, this is on average. Even Bevel Hope Mills at 88. That kind of falls in line with what we're seeing throughout the county. But Spring Lake, Falcon, Godwin, Linden. What we're seeing is that the municipalities, the rural areas, the northern part of the county, they're starting to see that push down from White County and Johnston County, even Hornet County. And people are looking for properties in the northern part of the county so they don't, they can get out of Wake and those higher, much higher tax areas. And then some of what we've seen is Linda, that they're really building, building a great deal there. And one of the staff was telling me earlier, even in Eastover, they're, they're building new developments, and even their signs are saying, you know, advertising Raleigh Durham area, you know, buy here. So you can, you know, we'll go there. And I think that's just what, a lot of what we're seeing. And I know these, these areas are going to see a big sticker shock. But I think, I think it's justified, especially from what we've seen. So the next big thing for us, because the values are set, notices are going to be mailed next Friday. The big thing for us now is going to be communicating with the taxpayers, letting them know what's available to them, and talking with them. Each of you should have got a little packet that's got a valuation notice form. This is what they will get when they get mailed next Friday. Some may get them as early as Saturday, but most probably start getting them on Monday. On the, at the top corner on both sides will show the date of notice or location, market value, and if they received any deferred or exempt amounts. And then on the front side, the side that, I believe yours should have a little house here on it. That's, I'm sorry, on both sides. For the front side, it gives you information on where to find information on our website. There's a few blurbs about that. Then there's more information on how to submit an appeal form. And then if you turn over the back, it's the appeal form itself. And people will be encouraged to use this to fill out, to go ahead and mail that back in or get that back in to us. Also, in the notice, with the notice, will be a frequently asked questions brochure. And you have a copy of that, and I'll mention that briefly on another slide. We'll also have a call center that will be available to answer questions for taxpayers. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that. We'll also be coordinating with PIO, get out press releases. One will be sent for when the notice is getting mailed. Talking about appeals, there'll be press releases for appeals and for other deadlines for getting those appeals in. And we're not only just do press releases, there'll be other social media means of getting that out. We'll also have reappraisal information page on the tax website and videos on the tax website. And the QR code on your presentation will actually take you to those sites, and we're going to make that available to people. This is the brochure that will be included with the notices. It's just going to have various questions that we feel like that the citizens will be asking and maybe help them explain a little bit more about what revaluation is, what their notice says, what the market value is, and other questions. So we feel like this has been very helpful in the past, and it's a good start for the taxpayers. We will have a revaluation call center. Again, we'll mail on May, February the 21st. At Friday, on Monday, the 24th, we'll open the call center. This is the number that the citizens can call. The call center, we'll have it manned by appraisal staff, Monday through Friday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, from 8 to 5. And then on Tuesday, some Thursdays, it'll be from 8 to 7 to give a benefit to those people that work and don't get off, and that can call at night. But appraisers will be in the call center. It won't be just, it won't be a tax assistant or anything. It'll be an appraiser. They can explain the reappraisal process. They can review the tax notice with them, and we'll be able to pull up their property record. And we can go over that with them, answer any questions about the assessed value. If that does, if they need more, we can schedule an appointment to meet with an appraiser. And then we can explain how to submit a written appeal form and basically tell them what kind of support they need to provide to appeal their property. Okay, so there will be quite a few appeals, and I'll mention that a little bit on another slide. We want, we want taxpayers, and if they call in and, or they come in, we want them to kind of go online and look at their property. They can pull it up, they can look at it, they can verify the characteristics. You know, something's not correct. I mean, they can call us, they can get that information to us. We would hope they would do that first. Comparable sales will be available for the taxpayers. They can look at those, but they can also find their own comparables. And then if they still believe their values incorrect, they are strongly encouraged to submit that informal appeal. And of course, we have the public website is here, and they can, they can do all this through talking to an appraiser or coming into our office. Potential documentation that they can provide for residential appeal is a fee appraisal, comparative market analysis. They can find, again, their own comparable sales or bringing pictures showing the condition of the property. We do like it when a taxpayer brings in a fee appraisal. We don't go change the value to what the fee appraisal says. But a fee appraisal is an individual appraisal. They have done an individual property inspection. They may know things about the property that we don't know because we don't always get all the information, no matter how hard we try. But a fee appraiser has usually got a lot more characteristics than we may have. So we'll certainly want to review those. We'll look at those and consider them, but we're not going to just change the value to that. Commercially, those appeals, it's going to be the same thing as for residential. But if it's an income-producing property, we're going to ask that they provide income and expense information for the three years prior to the revow. And that would depend on the type of property, could be square foot rate for top and center, their expenses, their vacancy rates, information like that. We try to get that for the three years prior to the revaluation. And again, anything that the property owner can provide that they deem important, we will look at. We don't discard anything or discount anything. Some of the things that is important to remember for the taxpayers is that just because there's a large percent change in value, that doesn't necessarily justify an appeal. It may be, you know, we're hoping it should be correct. We do mass appraisal, so we're never going to be exact. But we're going to be correct for the most part unless there's something we don't know about the property. But just because it went up 50, 60%, that doesn't justify the appeal. Also, at this point, we will have a lot of citizens that will, they'll apply their increase to their 24 tax bill and say, okay, now that's what my 25 tax bill is. I can't afford that. And they come in and appeal. So they're really appealing what they think their tax bill is going to be. And so we educate them some on that, that we're really two separate things. There's the assessed value, and then there's the tax rate. And we're only assessing the assessed value at this time. And what they really need to concentrate is that correct value for their property, not their tax bill. Once somebody appeals, within 90 days of appealing, we will mail them a second valuation notice. Once they get that notice, they'll have 15 days further that they can appeal to the Board of Equalization and Review. And they can always skip the informal and appeal to the Board of VNR. But it is very helpful to everybody, I think, to appeal during the informal. And we try to work those as hard as we can and get those done. So this is kind of what to expect. 2017 is not a good example. Values went down about 3.5%, and we did not have a lot of appeals, as you might expect. But overall, in '09, we had about 30% increase. I can remember exactly, but around 30, 31%. We had 128,600 notices and about 12% filed appeals. Our appraisers worked those. And again, really only about 1.2% of those that appealed informally actually went, appealed to the Board of VNR. And that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be heard at the Board of VNR because we will work with them again. We'll go out to the property. And all VER bills, we go to the property regardless. Informal appeals, we're not necessarily able to go to all of those. And that's why we ask them to bring as much information as possible. I do not know what to expect at this time. We can mail 143,000. Probably going to have a lot of appeals. But it whether it'll still be at like a 12% or to be a little higher, it could be that. But the main emphasis is that anybody that files an appeal will be heard by our office, and we will work with them to try and establish for sure what their fair market value is. So just quickly, I wanted to kind of go over, we do have some tax relief programs because we will hear that, we hear quite a bit, I'm going to fix them comms, and I can't afford it. So we want to make sure that they know what's available. You do have a brochure on tax relief, and you've also got one on the present use program. So I just briefly wanted to mention those. The elderly and disabled is an age and has an age and income criteria, and they must be submitted by June the 1st of each year. Disabled veterans is the first 45,000. They have to be totally, total and permanent service-connected disability. They must be submitted by June 1st. They can submit a late application in our Board of Equalization and Review. Can approve those for good cause. And then we have the present use value programs, a deferment program for agricultural, horticultural, and forest land. That is a deferment, it's a three-year rollback if they lose eligibility. The deadline applied for those is January the 31st, but we are just now starting to review those. So even though that deadline's not here, we are just starting to review them. So this is the remaining schedule. Again, our call center is going to be operational for 30 days, February 24th to March 24th. Our appointments with the appraisers will start next, the following Wednesday after the call center opens. That'll start February the 26th and run through April the 11th. Informals will end March 24th, and then we will start accepting formal VERS. The VR will convene April 23rd, and then it will adjourn on May 28th. So that's the window when people need to appeal their values. Once May 28th, 5 o'clock on May 28th comes, they do not have an opportunity to appeal timely for this year. The Board will continue to sit in session. They may sit in session to September or October, but it will be to hear timely appeals. Just a couple of key deadlines. Again, a reminder is that informals, this is March 24th. A notice will be, a second notice will be mailed in 90 days. Then they'll have 15 days to appeal to the Board. And all appeals must be submitted by 5 o'clock on May 28th to our office in writing to be considered timely. And then this is how people, citizens or taxpayers can reach us. Again, we have the call center. They can email their appeal to taxrealestate@cumberlandcountync.gov. We have a customer service number that they can direct them to an appraiser. And we also have the county website where there'll be an information page and some videos for people to go to and look at. That's all I had right now on the revaluation. It was an informational session, so there are decisions that should be made. But I would, I would love to play the entertaining questions at this point, if you have any.
Get ready. Commissioners, I'll open up for questions. Commissioner Adams?
I just only have two things. I thought it was very informative. I do think that this board, and we ought to start thinking about going from an eight-year cycle down to a four-year cycle, and you don't get these huge increases of people. I was at the state association, and I think a lot of counties are looking to go from this eight-year down to this four-year, and you don't get this. It's taxing on the tax office, but I think it's fairer for the citizens of this community, of our community.
If I may, in a lot of counties, you're right, are doing that. Probably close to half the counties right now are on a four-year cycle. A lot of the counties are moving to a six-year before they jump to that four-year. And that kind of helps with that transition, but you're right.
Because that's what happened in Guilford County, who ended up having to redo their evaluation because of the big gain that they had. The second question I have, because I know we're going to get these questions. These forms right here, they are already printed because we know what date it goes out. Instead of saying within 30 days, why can't we put what the date is that you, your last date to submit this?
March 24th.
Right. I mean, instead of saying within 30 days, because I'm going to tell you, when people look at it, even though it says notice up at the top, that's, you got 30 days from that date of notice at the top. They don't understand that. But if you give people a certain, we know what time, what this is going out. We just count the third days and say, you got to return this form by that date.
That's a good suggestion. Unfortunately for this year, it's already at the vendor, and they're getting.
But can we put it somewhere on the website, that the date? Because I think it's just important for them, and whatever communication, I know this is already there, but whatever other communication we can change, like website, when they call in, if they know the date, it's a whole lot easier for people. And even when we do, whatever we do, since we know what date it's, we're going to send it out.
Okay. And that, we'll have that on our website, and we're working with PIO to make sure that that information is publicized more than once.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Tyson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to say thank you, Mr. Utley, for what you do. Your staff is always professional, and I've had a chance to interface with them quite a bit. They're very prompt. So thank you. I know it's not an envious job, especially when values are going up, but really appreciate your hard work. And I'm going to, I guess, address the 900-pound gorilla in the room, which is, you know, obviously, there's some concern about, you know, the overall value increase and what that effect is going to have on the taxpayers. And, you know, to that end, and to Commissioner Adams' point, you know, having an eight-year cycle, I think there's certain outliers that are concerning. One is, you know, the inflationary nature of our economy and the effect that that's had on construction, goods and services, and, you know, how that's really been a driving factor. So, you know, with reevaluation, you're taking a snapshot at time, and you're saying, hey, here's the value at that snapshot. But as you said, the market's very fluid. And so to that end, I just had a couple of questions about the methodology and process, if everybody will indulge me. So residential properties, you stated in your presentation that you used the sales comparison approach. And, but on commercial properties, you use the income approach or the cost approach. And so I guess my first and two questions, Mr. Chairman, if you'll indulge me.
Go ahead.
Is, one, you know, you have some properties that are deemed to be residential but are more income-producing investment in nature. And I'm talking to our short-term rentals, such as our Airbnb properties. And so I'm going to give an example here. If you've got a residential, a single-family residential property that somebody has on Airbnb, and you're using a sales comparison approach, even though they're renting it out for $200, $300 a night, then you have a hotel owner who is on the income approach. And they're looking at that one asset, and they have 50 rooms, and they're reasoning it out. You're going to get a disparity there on what the value is in that residential versus that commercial, even though both of them were using them as income streams. And so I say all that to say this. My question to you is... And so, I say all that to say this, my question to you is, you know, with the cost approach on commercial, and with the income approach on commercial, would it not also be reasonable to use our sales comparison approach on commercial? Because, you know, that's going to really be the indication of the health of the market, and that's going to really compensate for things like the age of the structure, and it's going to help alleviate some of that concern over cost of materials and things like that. So just a question of why that approach isn't also included on commercial?
Okay. What I, we have found on commercial, I think I mentioned earlier on one of the slides that we had analyzed over 45,000 sales, barely 1,000 of them are commercial, and it's just not enough commercial sales in our mind is to value commercial property. And you're talking about, I guess, you're still talking about the rentals, or are you talking about all commercial property?
Yes, sir. I'm speaking to all commercial. So if I go get a third-party appraiser for a bank or anything else, when they go through that snapshot of value, they're going to actually look at all three approaches to establish a blended rate of what that value is. So they're going to look at the sales comp approach, they're going to look at the income approach. But if you have a vacant income-producing property that doesn't have any income attached to it, for example, then the only approach that you have to rely on is the cost approach. And as we just said, with the inflationary changes, then you have a, you have a property owner who has a vacant property that is not income-producing, but they're not getting the benefit of that market condition in the sense that, that the sales comparison is going to show you actually what that product is selling for at that point.
My response to typical commercial properties is that there aren't enough sales to adequately value those properties. The cost approach is the accepted approach generally, through appraisal standards, the cost approach is accepted. If you're talking about, like you were talking about rental properties, like, you know, you were talking about the Airbnb and all that, the problem that we have with those is knowing which ones are. And if we go in there and there's an Airbnb, and we value it on the income, they may not be an Airbnb nine months from now, and we don't ever know it. So it's, it just makes it very difficult, and we are, again, doing mass appraisal, and it's just, the more accepted standard is to use the cost approach on commercial. I don't know if that answers your question.
One more follow-up, though.
So then with that theory, if you were going to try to make it even, what's the methodology between not using the cost approach on residential?
Not using the cost approach on residential? Because we use it, for standard single-family homes, we use the sales comparison, because that's the, that's the way they're often sold. That's the accepted method, is use the cost approach, comparison approach. And there's plenty of sales to value those properties. I had Tammy Botellas here. She's our chief of real estate in Manhattan, and she was a key member for our revaluation. She actually headed up all the residential, and she's kind of, she didn't want to raise her hand, but she's kind of raising her hand over there, saying, I can bail you out maybe a little bit here, so I will kind of...
If you want to address, go ahead. In response to Commissioner Tyson's.
Yes, Commissioner Tyson, one thing I do, I would like to say. It's on the commercial, even though we are, they're using the cost approach, they have analyzed and tracked all the commercial sales, and those are considered when they're setting the cost rates. Okay? So they are trying to set a, Cumberland County, you know, consider what that market is doing with those sales, but only having, you know, I think we have like 1,100, you know, sales is not enough to do the cost approach, I mean, the sales comparison approaches we do on the single family. The single family, it actually is going to pull comparable sales similar to a fee appraisal, but not, because it's totally mass appraisal, right? So we're not doing, performing a fee appraisal on each one, you know, picking which comparables or handpicking the comparables. It's more of a statistical weighted difference to find those that are comparable to that property in that market area, that neighborhood, that type of property.
One more follow-up, Commissioner, if I may. Let me move into that. Go ahead, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you. So I guess my question is this, then, if you're saying there's not, and the time period in which you're saying you're tracking those sales, is just a 12-month time period?
The sales that we have provided were the sales all the way back since the 2017 revaluation.
So since 2017, we've only had 1,100 commercial properties sold in the whole county?
The ones that were deemed to be qualified.
And so I guess my follow-up to that is, if you're going to, if you're going to put the, if you're going to put the value out that is subject to appeal, and an owner can go get a third-party appraisal as an establishment of value, and that third-party appraisal is going to take into account the sales comp approach when that appeal is given, it just seems like we're spending a lot of time at that point and not getting to that actual value to start with, at least on the commercial side, because you're going to have that property owner who's going to go, this isn't right, I'm going to go get that appraisal, and they're going to come in, and they are going to take into account that sales comparable approach.
And, and just to say, when someone appeals and they do bring in appraisal, and a fee appraisal is going to give you, they have to consider all three approaches when they do an appraisal? And that they're going to wait which one they feel like is where, is, you know, is where most value is, right, on a fee appraisal? Then we are going to consider that, we're going to look at, you know, those appraisals. We have had people present appraisals, and we have looked at it, but a lot of times your fee appraiser is also going to, maybe outside of the county, for comparables, especially with, with commercial property that we cannot use. So that's one factor in the commercial property. When, when we do commercial land, we're looking at the sales the best we can, you know, commercial land. So when I say that, that was like approved property, that didn't include personal property or something that made us have to disqualify. And I wanted to speak, if I could, just a minute, on the residential property at cost. When we set a cost model for mass appraisal, we are setting a benchmark cost across the county. And we all know that location has a lot to do with value, so that's why we don't do residential property at cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, Chair. I just have two quick questions, and thank you, County Manager, for answering most of these on the short-term rental side for me. Going forward, I know because it's an issue on multiples areas, if you will, on the short-term rentals and having basically a roster of which properties are and are not, is there any way that we could potentially implement somehow to identify those short-term rentals, whether it's as a transaction process, the same way we do at 1031 properties, so they will be considered non-qualified as transactions? That way, they don't feed into the comps? And then, too, we can get a roster?
But the real estate side, we don't have any way that I'm aware of of identifying From the grocery receipts side, they do pay the grocery receipts, but what they do is there's, and I'm not the expert on it, but they, a company pays the grocery receipts for all these properties, and they will not tell us who they're paying for. They will not let us know, so we are not able to identify, and that's one of the problems that we do have with that, is we don't, we don't really know about the Airbnbs and the Verbos, I believe, who's actually paying, because they will not provide that information.
Legislature. The delegation.
Second question, Commissioner Patel?
And so, second question, so the appeals, I know we have no idea how many we're going to probably get, but out of the appeals that typically do come in, what percentage would get approved historically?
What percentage will?
So theoretically, if, let's say, all 100% of properties were appealed, what percentage historically, if, do those appeals actually turn into a value change?
I don't have that information. We have not, I mean, we tracked it in 17, I don't know, should we get it in 17? I'm sorry, I said, '09, we didn't track it as far as I know, then, in 17, I don't think we did then. I don't know, really, again, at 15% appeal, like it appeared in '09, that they did, I don't know. I mean, we're going to work with budget to try to determine, to get some kind of estimate of what we think's going to happen on the appeals, and I don't have any information on that.
Commissioner Fairclough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. One thing, I think, Joe, you probably didn't, you didn't say, it's impossible to value 140,000 properties, okay? Unless you've got 10 years to do it. So they use what is called blanket appraisals. And so, you don't, you don't have the individual nuances on every piece of property, and, you know, there, and there are differences in, in what you would get if you did an individual appraisal, and I think we all understand that. But those differences will be picked up on the appeal, so there'll be, there'll definitely be, he doesn't know the percentage of changes in favor of the taxpayer, but there'll be a lot of them, obviously. There probably won't be as many going down, but, but there'll be, there'll be a lot of that. And you, you know, if you go to the trouble to, to hire an appraiser and spend that kind of money, because, because you see there's a significant difference there. But these, these numbers so far don't mean anything until we go around and set a tax rate. Then they'll mean something, and then, then you'll get more than you, than you bargained for. And as far as the four-year cycle, we did that. And the year was 1990, was, I'm not, I'm not sure which is the appraisal year and which is the valuation year, but, but in 1992, we had a huge change, and there were a ton of appeals, and it was a big upward move in the overall value. So in 1996, we did, in fact, turn around and do it on that four-year cycle. I don't know, does anybody hear from Joe?
I think we had, we had a reappraisal in '80, we had one in '88, and that's when values, some of them tripled.
They went crazy.
And then we went from '88 to '92.
Yeah.
And then '96.
'92, '96, yeah, okay, so there were two, there were two, a couple of times on the four-year cycle. And then the 2016, 2017, I was, I was again sitting at this table, and we, we went down that year. We had a downward evaluation that year. And in 2020, I asked, I asked, do we need to revise that? I saw some of this, we all saw some of this coming in 2020, and there was no appetite to do it again in 2020. So that four-year cycle missed, so that's what, that's what, that's what we got, this eight-year huge cycle, that's what we've got. And you're going to get a lot of phone calls, all of us will, and the one phrase I think you're going to hear, will the, will the county agree to buy my property at that price? That's what you'll hear, right? And the horse answer is yes, yeah.
Marshall, that was Marshall saying that. Call Mr. Fairclough.
I'll make you an offer. No, seriously, you'll hear a lot of that, it is, is frivolous. But until the tax rate has changed, or hopefully lowered in our case, we won't really know what the end result's going to be.
Anything else, Commissioner Fairclough?
I hope not.
Commissioners, anything else, any other questions? Got a couple, but go ahead, County Manager.
It would be staffing, Joe and myself have talked, that we would recommend moving it from six and then eventually four, taking an interim step, the next revale is six, and then right after that, do a four-year revale. That way, good, bad, and indifferent, if the values go up, you're not, residents are not seeing a big jump, and then if values go down, we're not, we're not affected also.
Any other comments from commissioners? So a couple of things. One, it's a pleasure of the Board, if there's not any objection, I'd like to have the County Manager and staff go ahead and look at what that change would be, six years or four years, and bring it back to this Board for discussion at, we have plenty of time to figure that out, but at your, you tell us when you can bring it back over the next, you know, within the next 90 days, right, to this Board to discuss. If there's no objection from the Board on that direction, if not, we'll go ahead and ask them to do that. Also, to Commissioner Patel's point, I'd like to go ahead, unless there's objection from the Board, ask that we do track the, the appeal percentage and what, and what's changed. I think that's a good factor point, as we begin to look forward, especially begin to make decisions on moving six years or four years. So unless there's objection, I'd like the County Manager to work with the staff to, to direct that action to happen. Next, from a communications standpoint, County Manager, I want to make sure, I know we've got a tax website, but we need to have a mini communications plan or a mini media plan for how we're going to do this. In other words, things like clearly on the front page of the home, on the website, clearly these very simple, clear, concise actions, where to call. I know they're still going to contact us, and our emails are going to blow up, but having some clear, very pointed, simple message, so huddle them with the communications team to make sure we get a very direct, direct message.
One thing we'll also do is, we'll make sure that we provide commissioners with a one-page fact talking points that you can use as you get bombarded with questions.
And before I, before I continue, I'll...
Mr. Chairman, as you say that, if we, if you're talking about Linden, Spring Lake, and all of those, if you get a high concentration in Linden, is whether we can go out there as opposed to them coming here? If, whatever that high concentration is, if you're telling me Spring Lake's high, Linden's high, Wade and Garland, and you can combine some of them, but we may need to go to some of those places as opposed to having anybody come down here to be able to do it with one of those appraisers out there. You were just talking, I just thought about that when...
That's a good point. So as we look at an engagement plan around this, because this is, we are going to feel this, even though we haven't set a tax rate, one way or the other, we're still going to feel this, because there'll be confusion to the, to most of the, a lot of the property owners. So as we look at the community engagement plan, both from a, a call center capacity, in other words, the call volume that that call center can have, what I experienced during COVID with ESC and employment security claims, and the failure of that call center at the state level, we can't have that here, so we've got to have the capacity, and we're going to see that at a different level. So that engagement plan on how we're going to touch the public from the, from the appraiser's side, but also from a communications side, if we need to engage on the ground, because maybe everybody's not looking at the website, or there's some town halls. So my ask is that we have a community engagement plan around the release of this. These letters are going to go out, there's not a lot of time, we need to be very deliberate about it, so that we can, in my opinion, the public and our citizens need to feel that we are trying to inform as much as we can and not just send a letter and let them respond. So I'll give the floor to Commissioner Adams.
Just because you bring up such good points, Mr. Chairman. As we do that engagement, we may want to think about going to, when these municipalities have their board meetings, a short presentation on that, because, I mean, a lot of people will look at their local boards, so, you know, when you talk about town halls, that might be a better indication is to go to those, to those commissioner or alderman meetings, so...
And I'm confident that our communications team can develop that outreach strategy on how we're going to reach them. Watching Mr. Vaught and his team go to each of the, and I've been, four of them with them now, watching them brief at, at the meetings is an example. I'm fully confident in our team to be able to put together that outreach plan with those kind of techniques, but that's a good point, Commissioner Adams. So three things there, County Manager, just to capture, unless there's any objection from the Board, I'd like to give that direction before we take any action on this item. Anything, anything else from the Commission before we take action? All right. Anything else, County Manager?
No.
All right, hearing none, then I would ask for a motion from the Board. I'd entertain a motion from the Board.
Information only, I didn't know.
Staff recommend approvals and to be added to the Board of Consent. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me stand back, I'm looking at the wrong item. Let me step back. County Manager, is there, do you need any action?
No, I haven't.
Okay, got it. Any other action?
My understanding is we have to accept the scheduled value, at what point are we gonna do that?
That's already been adopted.
You did that at last board.
So even though we didn't know what they were.
Right.
We got the schedule, what do you want?
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Fairclough? Thank you so much, I know it's a lot of work and to echo Commissioner Tyson's comments, we know this is an amount, an amazing amount of work, we appreciate the work, and we all know that the work has just begun because on the community engagement side, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and move forward to item number four, other items, there's no other items to, that we have, so I'll go ahead and move to item five, committee reports. These committee reports are from the committees and this is just a, a update from the committee chairs and, and staff as needed in reference to what was discussed at the meeting, there's no action from these reports, it's just a discussion of what, what came out of the meetings for, to inform the rest of the commissioners. I'll go ahead and move to the ARP committee and turn it over to Vice Chairwoman Jones and any staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a meeting, myself and the members of that particular committee are Commissioner, Ms. Council and also Commissioner Patel. At that particular time, Ty was able to present with us, we had asked him to come up with a new structural guidelines in regards to the nonprofit grant program that used to formerly be known as the ARP, there will be discussion to change that particular name, and so pretty much he just updated us with that of the guidelines and structures of creating. I had asked prior to that, for those that are listening, we used to have a, a grant program which allowed individuals to apply and be able to be submitted with money if you had a nonprofit, to be able to help provide different services. So the ask question of him was to basically restructure that particular program, and what we wanted to do is to divide it into different programs, such as categories basically for youth at risk and then health, mental health, mental health category, educational category, and so you did a great job, Ty, we appreciate that. And so that is what our particular committee discussed, we discussed basically also that of perhaps needing more fundings, there was $300,000 allocated that was left over from the prior, from the prior grant program, so with the new one, there is discussions of perhaps that of increasing the amount of which we will be bringing to the board, there was a motion made to bring that to the board, which will be on the agenda, which will be on the items of new business for the February 17th meeting, and that is particularly, that's all we discussed at that particular time. Updates were provided by Ty and the main goal, the main goal for that particular meeting was to discuss a new grant program because we wanted to change a few things from the success of the program that was ARP, although this one will not be ARP. And so we look forward to bringing this towards the board, you all will receive information by email to review so that the board in itself can look at things and decide what would be a good number in regards to the cap limit number of what we want in regards to, for this new nonprofit grant program, and so just look forward to the next meeting. And have I forgot anything else, was there anything else we discussed, Commissioner Patel? Because you're on that committee too.
Robbins Meadow Defense.
Oh, yes, well, you can, you can, and there was also one other piece which was an update, please provide that, Commissioner Patel, since you're on the committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Patel. We just, another item of business was the Robbins Meadow asset and just providing fence for safety reasons, which I think will be on the consent agenda more days later.
And thank, thank you so much, because we definitely want to keep everyone safe and unfortunately it was a fatality last year, and so we appreciate the moving forward to being able to put something in place with distancing. And that was all that we discussed for our ARP committee. Any questions?
Any questions for the Vice Chairwoman or the committee staff? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move to item B, Policy Committee, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your Policy Committee met on February 11th, 2025 at 1:00 PM here in this room, and our agenda had two items included in it. One item was, there was a request made to further clarify how our committee process would work and to propose policy to the full board that would kind of act as a guideline and a framework of that process. So to that end, the Policy Committee worked in conjunction with our county manager and our county attorney and their staff to come up with a policy proposal that would fall in line with those said requirements and provide that structure. The committee voted unanimously to approve recommending that policy to the full board and that item will be on our consent agenda on February 17th, 2025, subject to review of all the members of this board and for a vote at that time. There was another item of business that we had moved to our next available meeting, which was a request to review proposed policy guidelines as it relates to our PIO department, and so we will be reviewing that request at our next Policy Committee meeting coming up next month. That was the only business with the Policy Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for Commissioner Tyson or the Policy Committee?
I just have one.
You recognize, Mr. Adam.
So, because I guess when we used to send things to the consent agenda, it was out of the Agenda Setting Conference, so all of the commissioners kind of voted on it and got to the consent. So out of this, there's only three people on the committee, why would it not go to an item of business and you didn't get a full, the board to do it? That was, that was the reason we went to the consent agenda out of the Agenda Setting Conference.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Go ahead, Commissioner Tyson.
Thank you, that's a great question, Commissioner Adams. So we actually, as a Policy Committee, recommended that the manager place that on the consent agenda, or rules of procedure state that the manager can propose consent agenda items. But in, in that process, when you see it, you'll see that if a, if a item has a unanimous vote of the committee, then the proposed policy will have that item moving to consent. During the regular meeting, of course, you'll get your agenda packet, and during the regular meeting, as always, any commissioner can pull that item and make it an item of business.
Any further comments, Commissioner Adams?
No, I guess when we get there, we're having maybe as an item of business, because that was just, it was always four, I think all seven of us sat, that's why I went to the consent agenda, that's all I was there. Because then you only got three commissioners, even though you're sending it to the manager to put on there, you still only got three of the other commissioners as opposed to a majority or whatever to put it on to the consent agenda. So.
Any other questions, and just to echo, I think what Commissioner Tyson was saying, any commissioner, anytime can pull it off the consent agenda. In the old committee format, where you didn't have an agenda meeting, it would move, it would move forward either to an order of business or consent. So any, any, any commissioner can pull it from the consent item, but when the packet's updated, you'll, you'll see that policy and hopefully the commissioners can review that and if we have any feedback on it, I would encourage you before the meeting, if you have questions on it, to reach out to the Policy Committee Chairman or the County Manager or the Attorney for further clarification on it as well. It's been a long meeting. Any other questions for the Policy Committee? Not, I'll move to item C, the Finance Committee, Commissioner Patel.
Thank you. So we discussed our meeting, we reviewed some of the questions and took kind of a consensus on clarifying questions for the school board related to their presentation to us, and I believe that's been sent over and it looks like we've got some answers back to most of them. We just mentioned the two ARP committee asks that will be on the Monday night agenda. We looked at just the historical, the financing history of the E. Smith High School, I know things have changed, but we just wanted to look at that in correlation to the larger ask from the school system. There was a consideration of intent to lease certain real estate property by Coastal Horizons that should be on our next meeting agenda. There was a public notice hearing for a project's prospect that will be on, I think that was a public hearing was for March 17th, we'll hear that at our regular meeting, and then a budget update from our director and a finance update from our finance director and a grants update from ACM Phillips. And that was.
Any questions for the Finance Committee and Commissioner Patel? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move forward to item six, monthly reports. Any actions, County Manager?
Yes, any, I would just want to find out if any questions on the Well Path Quarterly Statistical Report on MA Healthcare.
Are there any questions in, in regards to the Well Path Quarterly Report, commissioners? Hearing none, no actions needed, so.
And on the monthly project updates, are there any questions on any of the projects?
Commissioners, any, any questions on the project updates? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move forward to the next item of business, closed session, I understand there's no need for a closed session, County Manager, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, not for me.
Okay, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much, board. Just, we'll remain.